Hello, this is a meeting of the Milton Planning Board. I'm the chairman, Alex Whiteside. This is our 18th meeting in the current fiscal year. So that the viewing audience and perhaps the people who are here can identify us. Why don't we identify us?
Brian Furz, member.
April Lamarral, member.
William Clark, planning director.
Laura Master, assistant town planner.
Denny Swinton, member.
Cheryl Tog alias, member.
All right, now we're going to do some minutes. We're going to start with the January -- is January 2nd the first set of minutes we're worried about?
Uh, December 14.
Nope, December 14. Everyone's reviewed those?
Yeah.
And then be in order. I've reviewed them, right? They'll have to be in order. So, then we have January 2nd. And Cheryl has made a few suggested changes.
On the -- yes.
And those were emailed today. And they seem to be fine. And you have a...
A tiny tweak on the 24th.
Okay, that's the one that -- that's this one with the red.
Yep, do you want me to add to it?
Yeah.
Maybe you already made it.
Now, while she does that, then we'll pass the document around for people to look at. Why don't we -- if we have a motion to approve the other two sets of minutes, that would be good. So I think I heard a motion.
So moved.
And I think I heard a second from Cheryl.
So, yes.
And since your changes are a feature of these minutes, all in favor, aye. So those two sets are approved. Now we've got...
The 14th and the 2nd.
Yep, December 14th and January 2nd.
Now we're going to do some old minutes.
Ready to make a motion.
What are those old minutes? Julia, identify the old minutes.
I've got them at the meeting.
Yeah, I think you could -- I emailed them out there.
It's the meetings of May 22nd, 2014, June 5th, 2014, June 26th, 2014, July 10th, 2014, July 30th, 2014, November 6th, 2014, and that is all.
All right, now, you and I, Brian, were the only members of the board -- on the board. And since I think that we really need three members to approve these, we will invoke the rule of necessity. And the rule of necessity permits the other members to participate in the approval of these minutes. So, I move that we approve these minutes.
I'll second with discussion. Just quickly, I reviewed them all this morning and they all look fine. So, for the rule of necessity, I did review every word.
All right, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. We've got those approved. Now, this last set we'll send around and if someone reminds us, Julia, later on in the meeting, we'll deal with them. We're going to meet again on March 8th. We're going to meet again on March 22nd.
I'm sorry, I scheduled myself out of town on the 22nd.
And Brian scheduled himself out of town on the 8th.
Correct.
So people seem to -- on the 8th, shall we see if we can redo the 22nd? Or shall we just have you look at the...
I'm happy to look at the tape.
Okay, that's -- we can attempt to reschedule if you'd like.
Do we know what the agenda will be?
What?
Do you know what the agenda will -- what will be on the agenda then?
We have the stackers in East Milton.
Stackers.
Which is on, but it -- I'm not sure it will have cleared the Board of Appeals by then, so that may be continued.
I've already missed one of those. I just signed a Mullen form for that, so that would knock me out for that one.
On the 22nd?
No, the 8th. If you're meeting on the 8th, I can't miss two, right?
On what's happening on the 8th?
No, the stackers are on March 22nd.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, sorry.
Right. And we're thinking -- well, we're also thinking that we're going to -- I mean, we have a request for 333 Brush Hill Road to be continued to -- actually, he wants the 22nd.
Um, I might be able to call in if I'm not -- let me just check my air travel.
If you could call in, that would be -- yes?
Can I go to tonight's agenda as it affects the 8th?
Yes.
Under new business right now, we have an A and R for 193 Central Ave., which is the Whoza Club. The applicant is requesting that it be continued to March 8th. No time necessary -- no specific time necessary for that. Under public hearings, 475 Adams Street is -- we would open it tonight, continue to March 8th.
Okay.
We have two new public hearings that will start on March 8th. One at 7:15, one at 7:30.
What are they?
A definitive subdivision for 15 Mathaus, and at 7:30, a scenic road application for 161 Hillside.
Are you going all week?
Okay.
Would it be possible to postpone the 22nd? I'm sorry to ask. I just have three things going on that day.
Well, let's think about the 21st. Is the 21st work?
Same problem, I'm sorry.
23rd? The 23rd's Friday.
Should we look to bump these -- both of these meetings up a week?
What?
29th, I'm in Florida.
What about the 15th or the 29th?
Just thinking.
Oh, that's what you were trying for, okay. 29th?
I mean, could we move the 8th to --
I can do the 15th.
Could we move the meeting on the 8th to the 15th instead?
I can call in for the 8th. I will call in for the 8th.
Okay.
I will find a way to get to a phone. So now we have to deal with Denny's.
I mean, we could do it the 8th and the 15th.
Mm-hmm. I can do that, because I'm...
I can do that, too.
Can you do this?
We wanted two weeks in a row, Bill. Let's try and do that. Bill?
I'm listening. The 8th and the 15th, so the only one we have to do something with is Milton Marketplace.
And I don't think -- I think that it's continued to the 22nd, but they don't have their variance yet, so it wouldn't be -- it wouldn't be -- we wouldn't be ready to do that on the 22nd. So we'll post another continuance for -- until the -- a later meeting and the first meeting in April.
And then the 333 Brush Hill said they wanted the 22nd.
We'll do the 15th for them.
We can move them.
Which is good. That actually works pretty well.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Okay. All right, I think that solves that naughty problem. Citizens speak. Any citizens want to address the board on a matter of interest to the board or a matter of interest to the citizen?
Good evening, my name is Bob Hannigan, 334 Thatcher Street. I'm here to very briefly speak to an item that's going to be on the March 8th, Planning Board hearing for 15 Mathaus Street, definitive subdivision. It was originally submitted to the Planning Department as a -- an A and R, but due to the condition of Beach Street, it's on the corner of Beach Street and Mathaus, the Planning Department thought that it should be a definitive subdivision to improve the condition of Beach Street. So, it's a single-family house lot now that will be divided into two single-family house lots, one fronting on Mathaus and one on Beach Street. I believe you've all received the plans and perhaps had a chance to look at them, but if there are any questions in the meantime, or if you want to visit the site, then I'll be available. My home number is on the plan with the email address, so...
I've visited the site, has anyone else? Everyone, I think, has visited. We know what's out there. And if anyone has a question, if they look at the plans and have a question, you've got his cellphone. So, thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, you want to do citizens speak?
No, but I have a question on these agendas. 333 Brush Hill, is that a public hearing?
Yes.
It is a public hearing, okay. Okay.
But at some point, we may decide to do a new public hearing on it and just do it in one fell swoop, but right now, it's a continued public hearing.
Thank you.
Okay, other -- other citizens wanting to speak? Seeing none? Yes?
I'm just wondering, have you guys covered 485 Harland Street yet?
We are, in fact. 485 Harland Street is scheduled to start in two minutes.
Oh, thank you.
And let's see, in the meantime, what do we -- what do we have that might be quick? Lauren, what -- how are you doing with these town officials? Are you straightening them out?
I'll take this one. Last Thursday, we had a pre-construction meeting for the Pulte project, which we brought in the building commissioner, the DPW, engineering, fire department, fire safety, town administrator, and planning. We met with Pulte's -- their whole team, their site team, their building team, their engineering team, and their main office team. We met with the site contractor here. The project started Tuesday, and they are already, from where the pest house is, all the way down to Unquity Road right now. We've already had a meeting this week with DCR, because they're already at that point. They're starting to create the access road. So, we have put everybody together, we have a contact sheet that everybody has, we've had a few issues up there that neighbors are calling because of the noise. The project runs by its construction management plan, times are all there, the fence is already up, the fence has been up for a little over a week. The fence is at the 100-foot buffer, so it's extremely visible. It's a five-foot-tall orange construction fence that runs the whole 100-foot around the property.
SW PPP, is John Thompson on top of that?
He is. Mr. Rosati, the engineer, is too. He checks in. I talk to him every day. John talked to him...
Our engineer?
I'm sorry?
Is he the peer review engineer, or is he the project?
There is a requirement by Pulte that they have to have an outside engineer. He is that outside engineer.
But they're working for -- they're working for us, essentially?
No, he works for Pulte. But Pulte also has an independent person that oversees theirs on the federal level, because of a federal level that they get hit in a couple of different projects out in California. So, they're on top of it more than anybody else I've ever seen. Our conservation agent would have been there this week, but he's on vacation till the 8th. So we did have -- we did notify the chairman. Chairman's like, nope, you know, ego, John Thompson, and Chase, and he said we were good.
Yes.
You mentioned that the neighbors had called in a couple of complaints?
Not complaints, just questions.
Okay, like, what were they like?
One of them was, you know, the fence looks like it's closer than it should be, and it's not, it goes into a -- it's where the utilities will go out to Countryside Lane, so the fence actually wraps around and goes to somebody's property, so it doesn't stay back just 100 feet. Another one was, you know, well, they make their cutting down trees, how many houses, just questions that they felt they didn't know before. Others were, you know, how much fill, where is the fill? You know, the plans are on the table, they come in, they look, and they, I think, leave comfortable.
Okay, can I go back to the SWP for a second? So I thought the -- that Pulte was paying for the town to hire someone to receive those reports and make sure that they're accurate and being...
Should we have to, and we're waiting for the conservation agent who will be overseeing?
So that is going to happen, okay. Thank you. And what are we doing about tree management?
They marked every tree from the 100-foot to the property line. If a tree was 102 to 103 feet, they saved the tree. I walked the entire line with them. They're all wrapped with tape.
I saw some marked closer to Unquity today also when I drove by. So are we going to do periodic inspections, just to triple check?
All the time. DCR has already been there twice to go and look at what they're doing. If you looked at it, you would have seen that the orange fence is way in the woods, and what they've cut is just a -- I think it's a 40-foot cut right now.
Just for the road?
It will move up to a slightly larger, but they are making a smaller cut right now. They have to do blasting in two places. They have notified the neighbors, they've notified the town. There's a process that takes a month before they can do that blasting. We have a blasting bylaw that works through the fire department and the building department. And they have their own committee to do that. The neighbors get their houses surveyed, if they want it. It can be exterior, or it can be interior, too. It's up to the individual homeowner. The town -- the buildings that the town owns at the four acres will have the foundations surveyed. I think there's a few too many cracks inside the walls to be able to figure out, did the crack come from the blast? But we can do the foundations, and we will.
Can we ask the building commissioner just to do periodic drop-ins during these early phases, just to make sure we're guarding against any potential clear cut?
Yep.
I think that would make me feel very happy.
He is setting up his -- right. He's set up -- he's setting up his electronic processing, which he started today with engineering.
So they'll have a record of who goes and when and what they see?
When, yeah. It won't just be by house, it'll be by site. Zero Woodlot Drive will be the project, and then the individual numbers there.
Good, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Now we're going to do our scenic roads public hearing. We have an application, and would you describe what's in the application, Bill?
Yep. There is an application with a narrative. There is no application, it's a letter narrative. And there is a plan. So you have a narrative, you have a plan. Your plan will look like -- I think you all got one of these tonight?
Yep.
That's a blow-up of the one that you got with your narrative.
Well...
Yep. This one actually shows you the road, shows you the new driveways, shows you the trees. This hearing is a joint Planning Board tree warden. The tree warden could not make it tonight. He would ask that the chairman take -- open his hearing, close his hearing, until either your next meeting or sometime after March 1st.
He wants what?
Wants you to open his hearing and close his hearing, continue his hearing until...
Okay, we're going to open his hearing with our hearing, and we're going to, if we conclude our hearing, we'll close his hearing as well.
Yes, yes.
But if we don't conclude our hearing, we will keep his hearing open.
Yes, thank you.
Do you have any copies of the write-up on this?
Of the narrative?
Yeah.
I don't have paper copies, still put the board in the works.
Yes, I do. Actually, it's in here, right here, it's like...
Oh, it's in there, okay, sorry, sorry.
It's on the board.
Okay, now, what we're going to do is, this is a public hearing. We're going to hear from the applicant. We've received some letters, we're going to discuss those, but we're initially going to hear from the applicant as to exactly what is being sought here. And we have a letter dated February 13th, 2018. No. Is the narrative in here?
No, I don't, no.
I haven't seen the narrative. Maybe we could go up and get the narrative?
It's very brief.
Oh, okay. It's a very short narrative.
Correct.
All right. Introduce yourselves and tell us what you're seeking.
Sure. So, my name is Hashan Hamod, I'm the owner of the property, and...
Thank you, my name is Jeff Assett, I'm a civil engineer with Morse Engineering.
So, this is my first time ever at any planning meeting. Feel free to interrupt me, ask me questions. So basically, I, right now, I'm building our home, which is about a 6,000 square foot -- the property is a four-acre property. Right now, there is a driveway that is extremely narrow. I don't know if any of you guys have visited the area, but it's a slope, and it's extremely narrow. There's two huge trees on each side of it. I mean, I always find myself actually leaning forwards when I'm getting onto the road, trying to come out. It's a safety risk. I mean, I have three young children. It's quite unsafe as it stands right now. So I -- and then, you know, the other thing in terms of just access to the property is very, very limited as it stands now. The contractor, even with a pickup truck, has to take like a three, kind of, you know, three turn to get on the street. So, I'm asking for this change, basically, because it's a safety hazard.
I'm going to pass around, I think I have five or six copies of a couple pictures looking at the driveway.
And I have a picture on my cellphone that I just took when I'm trying to get on the road. I don't know if this is relevant, if you want to see it, but just...
How many people have been out there to take a look at this? I have. I think we all have taken a look at this.
I did, too. I went up the driveway, I came down the driveway.
Your car.
Okay, and that's the road.
Right.
That's, okay. Thank you for sharing that.
Can we angle back so we can see as well? Thank you.
So, again, this property is about four acres in size, and it has 342 feet of frontage along Harland Street, which is at the bottom of the page. And the current driveway comes in right here along the southern end of the site. And we're looking, it comes in like this, and then comes up to the existing house that was recently demolished, currently beginning the process to rebuild that house. The new driveway will come in through the same location, but we're looking to try to make it a little easier to navigate and make it safer. Currently, it's, the asphalt is narrow, and then you have the railroad tie retaining wall on either side, so it really makes it feel tight. You can get into it okay coming from the south, but if you're coming from the north, it's a really tough turn to make, and just those railroad ties make it feel downwards narrower. So we want to widen the asphalt a little bit, and then taper out the grade on either side. In order to do that, we have to remove two trees. There's one on either side of the driveway. I'll circle those in red. And those trees are 20 inches and 18 inches and... Oh, they're both 20 inches in diameter.
Sorry.
The second component of the project is, Hashan would like to add a second entrance over here. It does have 342 feet of frontage, and he would like to have another entrance on this side of the property. We are going to be running an water main in this location, and in order to do so, we have to take additional trees. There are two here where the driveway is located, and then another one here, and another one here. These two have to be removed in order for the driveway to physically put the driveway in. The other two are in order to provide safe site distance. There are a few other trees we show coming down in order to provide that site distance, but they're on the other side of the property line, on the private property. The plan that I gave you that has the green dots down on the bottom shows those trees that Jeff just marked out. And then, sorry to flip-flop, going back to the other driveway, the existing driveway, we are taking out 17 millimeter feet of stone wall as well. We tried to keep that under your threshold of 18 feet, requiring permit.
What's the grade on the new driveway?
So, the new driveway, per the DPW right-of-way regulations, it has to be 10% for the, within the right-of-way, so for about the first 10 feet, and then it goes to 15%.
15?
Yeah, 15 and a half, actually.
Okay, I can see it here.
15.6.
15.6, yeah.
No, I didn't see it. Where is that?
It's tucked in there. 12.6.
Got it, thank you.
I still don't see where it says 15.6. You?
I don't know.
Okay, is that it?
Maybe it's not this one, maybe it's this one.
All right.
It's one of those...
Questions from the board.
What?
Oh, I see it, okay. Oh, there it is.
Yeah, I'd like to, so I see in your letter, sort of, the basis for the new driveway is the narrowness of the existing driveway and the concern about traffic in either direction. This is a single-family home, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So, I guess I'm just curious as to how many cars you think are going in and out of here on a regular basis, that that would be a significant concern?
Right, so, it's myself, my wife, my in-laws will be there, too. But it's also very steep, so like, anytime we have like, any visitors, there's like, really, it gets very difficult to come in and out. But on a regular basis, we're talking about, you know, three cars.
The proposed is going to be far steeper than the existing.
It is, we're working with the existing topography there. It is steep, it's actually about the same steep -- same slope as the existing driveway, how it sits now.
Have you considered just a reconfiguration?
Can you bring up the letter again? Can you bring up the narrative again?
A reconfiguration of the existing driveway that doesn't necessitate having to do a loop? It seems to me that the location of the existing driveway, the terrain is a lot less steep. And you're, if you straightened it out a bit there, it was fairly flat. Can you get the -- oh, you have the letter back there. So did you look at an alternative to this one, I guess, to improve safety that doesn't require a loop?
Yeah, we did. It's really the convenience, say, they're having a family party, a holiday party, and there's really not, if someone's parked in the loop, there's really nowhere to turn around, so it's just a convenience of being able to come down the driveway, pull off on the side, and then pull out and leave the other exit. And the unique thing about this property is it has so much frontage, it could actually be subdivided into two A and R lots. So it's not like you have two driveways on a small, narrow lot, it's quite wide.
Do you have a visual of the existing driveway?
Yeah.
I mean, does it have a circle when you get into the inside of the property?
Yeah, so the existing, currently, there's a house here, and there's a garage here. The driveway follows the same general path to the loop, and then dead ends at the garage. This portion doesn't exist.
Okay. And is there an existing water main already? Why do you need to bring the, a new water service in? Why do you need to bring the, a new water service in?
It's, so again, I'm not technical. I was told it's iron and it's in the neighbor's, like the lock is in the neighbor's property or something. So, the town regulations that, I cannot keep it now with, with Jenny's house. I have to change it.
Okay, thank you.
What is the explanation?
So, there's an issue with it being, crossing over the neighbor's property line and also the material.
Yeah, iron.
And approximately, which side of the property is the current one on? The, the current water service?
So, there was no easement over for this line?
Same side. Where's the existing line? I believe it's on this side of the property and it crosses over that property line, from what I've been told. I think it was just a mistake when they built the house, the contractor put it over the lot line.
And the neighbor says, you've got to get rid of that pipe. The neighbor, maybe, you're the neighbor and maybe, maybe that's not what you're saying.
No, not, not the neighbor.
Not the neighbor. I was told the town, I mean, the main reason, the iron versus copper, something like that.
Sure it's not lead?
What's that?
Is it lead, not iron?
Possibly.
Couldn't be, it's not on that pipe.
It's not that old? Okay. Be surprised, some of those are...
Bill, do you know?
Well, we'll find out, we'll find out from the water department what the problem with the pipe is, if anything. So...
Okay. I have a question. So, the water service, this is the only place you can bring it in through this tree?
No.
Or were there other places on this lotline that you could have brought in?
No, you could bring it in anywhere over the frontage.
Okay. And did you look at other places to put this exit? Because it looks like there's more space here as far as trees.
Yeah, as far as tackling that slope, we want to bring it in at the furthest point away, so we have a longer horizontal run.
Bill, can you tell us what, you did have Town Engineer John Thompson review this drawing as well? Is that right, on the slope?
He did. And Jeff had to send him back comments about the, the pitch?
Yeah.
And the, the sightlines. Can you explain those?
Sure. We originally had a 15% comp coming into Harland Street and why should I change that to get that below 10% within the right-of-way? He also was concerned about the angle of the driveway. It can't be less than 75 degrees. So, that does comply at 76, it happened to be. And then sight distance, we want to be able, we want to show that you can see an adequate distance looking in either direction from that point. And that's what this plan shows. The green line is the edge of the right-of-way and the yellow lines are the line you would look. And sitting in a car, seeing windows about 20 back near the pavement, it will be 300 feet of frontage. And that's why we have to take down the two visual sections of the driveway.
Other questions from the board? Mr. Clark, any questions or shall we hear from the, the public? I will, you know, we prefer to, getting letters is great. We have letters from Carol Stalker, Harris Collins, Claudia Clifford, and Bill Roach, Stotan Donas Swanson, Anthony and Nancy Smith, and Roberta Williamson. And we're not going to read them out loud, but we, we do have them. So, we're going to hear from the public next. So, you can, you can be available for questions and, but you can sit down in the front row and we'll see what, what we hear. Who in the public wants to be heard on this application? Yes?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Vivian Ziman.
Keep coming right up to the microphone.
Step to the microphone.
Oh, sure. Good evening. My name is Vivian Ziman. I live at 525 Harland Street and... And you're the neighbor. How are you? My family and I wish you every success and every happiness in your new home. We too are recent neighbor, recent buyers in the neighborhood. We chose the neighborhood because of its beautiful scenic highway. The trees belong to the people of Milton and I, I would be against the removal of, of trees. We wish you every success with your property. I think there's just too many trees coming down. We need to save our neighborhood. Thank you.
Yes.
Good evening and welcome. And welcome. Hi. I am a direct butter, Claudia Clifford, at 475 Harland. My driveway would be about 20 feet from the proposed driveway. First of all, I too do not support the cutting down more trees in the neighborhood. But, you know, you speak about safety. You're not familiar with our street. Our street is very busy, 1,600 cars a day, a lot of speeding cars. This corner is incredibly dangerous. So, but I come out of my driveway, this is very flat. My house is set back about 275 feet. We have a wide driveway. We have a stone wall here, a very short stone wall here. We have a new, a newer stone wall on the other side of the driveway. As, as we come out of the driveway, this is completely blind. You can't see. And so, I'm going to support cutting down trees to facilitate that sightline. Several years back, as, I have to literally come out of my driveway, come to a full stop and look either way to ensure a safe egress. Nonetheless, I was T-boned by a car, the police department estimated his speed at 55 miles an hour. He spun me into a tree and told my car. Prior to us putting up this second stone wall, some Milton High School students lost control of their car, come down Harland. They went into our driveway and down into a gully, missing a tree by just several feet. They would have been killed if we had that wall up. But that, those are the two most significant incidents, but we have, as I exit my driveway on a very regular basis, it's dangerous. There's, the people are on their phones, they're texting, they're speeding, they're cutting through, they don't know the neighborhood. It's not safe. I mean, you talk about safety. Look, I mean, I, I knew all of our butters here. You could probably widen it there. I mean, we've had neighborhood parties at that property in the past where we had lots of people put their cars onto, on, up here and into the circle. We'd have like 50, 60 people there. So, we welcome you to the neighborhood and wish you much luck, but I'm telling you, you're not familiar with our street. It's very dangerous. You can't even walk your dog on the street without being concerned about your safety. So, I'm sorry, but we welcome you. It's a great place to, that's it. Okay.
May I ask you a question? So, I wasn't clear. There is not a clear sightline at that sort of point, which is where they're proposing to remove a tree.
Is that coming, oh, right.
So, are you opposed to the removal of this tree?
I'm opposed to the removal of...
Even if it improves the sightline?
I don't know. I don't want to, I don't...
Okay.
I want, our street is beautiful and it's beautiful for a reason, because we have a lot of trees there. But this is really steep here.
Yeah.
I mean, it's ludicrous to think that, that this is a safer way to get out of the drive than doing something, as this woman suggested, to just modify this exit. It's really steep here. It goes up like that. I come out and it's flat, totally flat.
Yeah, I was there today, so I see what you're talking about. I was just confused about the tree. So, if we weren't even talking about the second driveway?
Yeah.
Would you support removing that tree for an improved sightline?
No.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted clarity. Thank you.
Thank you. I need some air.
Yeah, no. Thank you for sharing that. This, this, details on safety mean a lot to me, to all of us, I'm guessing.
Okay, anyone else? Yes?
Thank you all for the warm welcome. Just, just one point in terms of safety. I mean, I, I hear you point on the street. I know how it's like and, you know, there's, there's the speed bumps, they're there for a reason. But right now, there's this huge tree. I mean, I show you on my phone. I'm going out, I'm like cleaning, I'm trying to look. It's not just this tree. I have like two trees on each side that make it extremely dangerous. So, you know, doing something will improve the safety.
Again, welcome to the neighborhood. My name is Richard Benomi. I live on 60 Forest Street. I don't live on Harland Street. However, I'm listening to all the comments. They're all justified. The one I listened to first is a second driveway and a possible subdivision there. Okay, is it four acres and I'm sure it's subdivisible. As far as cutting the trees down, I suggest anybody on this board to go up and take a look at the corner of Parkwood and Hillside Street. Again, it's a buildable lot. Everybody should have a right to build a house of their dreams. I built mine up there. We have, we own seven acres. There's five houses. 32, 33 years ago, when Peter American went to develop that, okay? There's a 14-foot driveway for seven, for five houses. I own three acres of it. I have a right to put a driveway in off of Briarbrook, but I won't do it. Okay? Our stone wall had to be limited to, I believe it was 16 feet. Okay, the driveway is limited to 14 feet. It is extremely dangerous and you're right. I have been hit by people's mirrors trying to walk my dog up there. The one-way Forest Street and the restricted driving means nothing. Just go up there someday. My concern is here, this original house here, he should build a house of his dreams. I, I wish him the best of it. Okay, again, it's subdividable. I believe there's another intention here for another driveway. There's no need for another driveway because that driveway has been utilized since the 50s, when that first house was put up there. I remember it. Every time you take down another 20, 22-inch oak tree, it, it doesn't grow back for another 75 years. I think it's great in the way it is and to just keep it, to keep our neighborhood the way it is. It is a historical district here. And as far as the water line is, dig up your driveway and run the water line down the driveway. People put their septic systems under the driveways when they, when they have limited space, like a few of our houses up there. If you don't want a water line, put in a well. I have one. I put it in 30 years ago. Works great. Dies great. So, there is a lot of alternatives. My concern is, this second driveway is an intention for a subdivision. The road is bad. Everybody knows what the road's like up there. Everybody knows what the traffic is. We don't have to elaborate on that. Just go up there someday. And I'll bring up another situation. On Forest Street, Alexander, you've lived up there for years, you know it. Mrs. Allison, when she wanted to subdivide her property, she had 13 acres, wanted four homes. She ended up with selling it off and that's fine. There are trees that have to come down when you build a house. Not all of them. They can be selectively done. Okay, but when they're town trees, they belong to the people in town. They belong to that historical district. Mrs. Allison, when they built the first house out front, wanted a second driveway. I opposed it. And the reason why I opposed it was, you already have a driveway there for access. Use it for your second house and it worked out quite nicely. Okay? Then they built another house behind it. So, it's, it turned out to be, if you let this happen, it's just, it's just, it sets a precedence for everything everybody else wants to do up there. Where they want their driveway, what they want to do, what kind of historical stone walls they want to take down. I'm not opposed to anybody building their dream house and build it the way they want and they're designed. It's their house. Okay? Do it aesthetically pleasing for the whole neighborhood in the town for what it is. But my, I believe this intention is for a second driveway. And come with that second driveway, it's more snow ending up on Harland Street, like everybody plows their driveway. I'll take that back. I won't accuse everybody. But drive up Forest Street, it's easier to plow it across the street, leave it on, on the street. And it adds more, more, although really convenient, maybe to slow some of the traffic down, but it also makes another hazard and dangerous. I believe that you could probably maybe move the driveway. Block that one up, put the stone wall back there, leave the, leave the trees, relocate this driveway down a little. Do it strategically, that it's more aesthetically pleasing for the whole neighborhood and the way it is and should be, and as way has always been left that way. Construction vehicles will go in and out of there. We built seven, five houses up there. Okay? People will put on additions, swim and pool, you name it. We've had everything under the sun in there. It works. Might take just a little extra, but it will work. I mean, you've done everything with, with, with this, with the poor farm, with their restrictions. It comes with building a house, but once it's up, you'll get used to it and you'll get to use the way it is. If the driveway is that much of a hazard, put a mirror across the street, like other people have down there on some of this tree, or on a pole, so you can see the cars coming. I don't think anybody's opposed to that. There's your safety factor. And that's all I've got to say.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Do we have a plan of the existing driveway with the, in its current location?
Yeah, both the existing and proposed driveways are shown on that plan. The existing is gray scaled back.
So, the new grade, this, if I'm understanding this plan correctly, there's new grading of the existing driveway and a slight widening of it? Is that, is that what I'm understanding there?
The existing driveway really is not safe how it is right now. It's, I just wanted to make it safe. We want to widen it and slow it down.
But this is, this is the current location of it?
It is, yes.
And have, have you considered where it's flat here and, and where you wouldn't be requiring to take down these two trees perhaps of swinging it this way?
There'd be quite a bit of greening associated with that, so the whole, the whole property...
It's flat according to these contours.
If you're standing on Harland Street beside the property, it comes up quite a bit, like 10 feet or so. So, if that's where the current opening is, it's a lot easier, it's a lot less work, it's a lot less trees to come down, just to widen the existing driveway as opposed to relocate it. Cheryl, the...
Right here, this, I understand how to read contours. This contour goes like that?
Look, no, look below the property line, just to the, right there. See the left of the tree? See the contour lines there?
Yeah.
How tight they are right there?
Yeah, well, it's no different than what he's proposing to do here. It's just that you could come out without being at an angle.
It's, it's cutting into a banking.
Right. The ones on the right are new. The ones on the left, the dashed ones are the, the existing ones. It's within the right-of-way.
Right. But we're talking about whether there's an alternative to do it, to improve safety without having to build this. And I would say that that is a lot easier than building that.
Why, I, I mean, I think that we should think about, we should determine whether or not the existing driveway is objectively unsafe and whether or not it's, you know, it's reasonable for it to be improved. Because I, I, you know, we traditionally discourage two driveways on scenic roads. We, it's happened, but it's happened, it's not anything that we, we encourage. In fact, we discourage it because it just makes the roadway that much less scenic. And here you've got a significant number of trees to be removed. I mean, you've got the two trees at the entrance and I, it just, it would be a shame to lose one of them. Losing both of them seems to me totally unnecessary, but...
Well, that's, that's my point, Alex. If the driveway shifted this way further, you could still have to eliminate this one, but you wouldn't necessarily have to eliminate that one.
Well, I think that's, that's possible. But it, it does seem to me that we've, we've heard people say that it's unsafe, but we don't have, do we have, does the planning department have a view on whether it's safe or unsafe?
Having gone out there with the town engineer and the, the tree warden, there is a curve there. If you...
With, at the, at the current entrance.
Right in the middle, right, the middle of the property does have, does come to a point so that if you're at one driveway, you won't see the other driveway.
We're talking about improving the existing driveway.
So visibility is bad.
Is the existing driveway unsafe?
No, I'm not sure that it's unsafe, but I'm not sure that you get-- It could be improved with grading by going to the right. Right now, it comes in and it turns very sharply and goes to the left to get to the house. If it went straight up and dropped itself down and then went to the left, it would be a lot safer. You're coming off of a grade--
Okay, and so it's sort of a--
Sliding down the hill.
Perpendicular and then--
Turn on the property. Don't come at an angle. If we're coming down here with a fire truck, the fire truck is going to have to make a couple of moves to make it up that driveway as it exists right now.
Right, well, I think that's right because it's--
It needs to go--
You'd have to go--
Yes. It's--
Unless you came the other way.
And I think--
But that's not the quickest way.
I think Claudia would tell you that there's a reason for trying to make those driveways a little closer to 90, which is why, you heard Jeff make the comment that it's 76 degrees. We do not, we'd like to place our driveways at 90 degrees the same way we place our streets so that you can have vehicles come down and make that swing into the driveway. If you, taken you move it too far, the bigger the truck, I have to go up, turn around, come back to approach that house. So if I'm coming from skating rink, from Unquity Road coming down to this property and I'm bringing the fire truck in here, I have to pull in, back up a little bit and then go around. It needs to, to siphon it out, it probably needs to go into the property more and then go left.
I think Cheryl saw something personally. I mean, it's relatively flat. You're not dealing with grade. You can hit basically a 90-degree when you hit the street and you can have a relatively, you'd almost have a 90-degree turn once you go to the driveway. You could widen it out a little bit to accommodate that turn and then thin it down as you start to go straight again.
But the existing driveway is?
Yeah, well, to the southwest where there are no trees.
Where there are no trees.
I'm saying stick between the, stick in the existing driveway.
But Bill, what you're saying, you gotta go like all the way through the cot. It's a mess. It's a, if you leave the driveway where it is and come in and go perpendicular to the road, that is an enormous amount of site work.
See where the stone wall is, where it says property line? Right on the line, there's a stone wall there. Look on the street side of that. Now look at the contours there. That's going like this. It's, it may be, it may be flatter at the top, but it's not flatter. You're cutting into that hill.
I understand your point. But you're going from what, 103 to 10-- Can't find the corresponding, it doesn't, I mean, it looks like 105 or 106, Bill. Down on the new driveway location, they're going almost 20 feet from 103 down to 85.
Right.
That's insane.
I think you stick to the old driveway and move it straight in and then go left.
As far as I can tell, I see a 103, as Brian said, and I see a 109. We're going six feet.
Yeah. I see the 109 now, okay. I got it. I see the 109, yep.
So six feet is a lot different than going--
20, 17.
17 feet. And I, you mean, you're going to end up having to do grading work there, but if the primary concern is safety of the existing driveway, I think that's a preferable way to handle it than to build a whole nother driveway at a much steeper slope. That requires a lot more trees and wall to be taken down.
Okay, we're going to, the engineer is going to possibly enlighten us. Come on up.
All right, so I agree that this existing entrance is a nightmare to get into. One of my experiences was I came from the north and I tried to pull in and my truck is a standard-sized pickup truck. And I started taking that turn and realized I wasn't going to make it. So I backed out into the road, pulled forward and then backed in. Backing in was tough because you have, it's a narrow driveway with retaining walls on either side. I was having trouble seeing those. Got up to, close to the top, I put it in park and the truck started to slide. It was a sheet of ice in park. Then pulling out, you get down here, you're on a steep slope, so your car wants to slide into the road, which would not be good. And you can't, you have to inch your way out, whether you're looking left or right, to see around both this tree and this tree. You don't know if you're clear until your front bumper's in the road.
So--
It's gotta, and I think with this driveway, I think they put it in the right spot for the right reason. If you were to slide it down this way, well, the road's pretty steep here and you might be starting two or three feet lower in elevation and it's, and it's very steep for the first 20 feet. So you're going to do an outrageous amount of site work to move that driveway and ultimately I think it's in the safest spot where it is now.
I think it's disingenuous to call that an excessive amount of work as compared to this work that's being proposed to put another driveway in. And do we have a record, Bill, of whether that driveway, which has been there since 1950s, has had any accidents as the severity of this safety has been raised to us today?
I do not. Here's the driveway. If I'm going, right now I am going towards Unquity Road, so the driveway is right here. That's the driveway.
I did drive up it a few days ago. I didn't, I didn't come from the direction that I can see would be more of a challenge, but--
That's why I was saying if you were to take and just cut in the existing driveway here--
Yes.
And make your turn in here--
Now I understand what you're saying.
Yes, you could do that, yes.
And I just drew it because that's, now I understand what you're saying.
But look at the hill that you have to cut.
Yeah, I agree. What you suggested is better, Bill.
I agree, you're right.
You're right that their part is flat.
Look at you.
But it's flat on their property and steep on ours.
Well, you achieved the 90 degrees that way.
Okay, now let's have a little pushback from the applicant.
You know, I think it might be helpful if people do this. Go there, today's been snow and might be a little bit nicer tomorrow. Go tomorrow, try to come out here and take a right and just see if you are actually like doing this to be able to look and feel, you know, if it feels safe to you. I mean, even if we broaden this, this tree is an issue and to some degree this one, but this was more of an issue to take it right. So try this, come from here, try to go left and then come up, try to take a right and just see how it feels. You know, I mean, I have no interest in cutting down trees of town. I want to just feel safe with my kids driving on.
You've heard Mr. Clark's suggestion, which seems to me to address part of your issues.
Yes, to Mr. Clark's point--
Come on up and be heard by the viewing audience.
So on that photograph there, we're holding, basically holding the left side of the driveway and expanding to the right and we are, and we're going out a little bit. So we kind of are doing what Mr. Clark mentioned. It will help with the angle. We could probably swing a little further to the right even, but we generally are. That's kind of what we're trying to accomplish there.
Why aren't you trying to create a 90-degree angle there though? Why aren't you going straight in and then taking a 90-degree left so that you don't have that--
Well, I feel we can keep the driveway at a softer slope by kind of going across the slope instead of straight up.
Well, and also, it's part of the deal of the loop. If you have the loop, you don't have to worry about not turning into it, not using it for both coming in and-- So it does seem to me it's probably part of the loop. But let me tell you what our test is in our regulations. We're supposed to look at preservation of natural resources, environmental values--
It was environmental--
Scenic values.
Environmental values, historical values, scenic and aesthetic characteristics, public safety, compensatory actions proposed such as replacement of trees or walls and other sound planning considerations. That's in our rules and regulations. And so--
I think one of the bigger issues too is the property line is behind these trees. It goes along this wall. This is the property line back here. So even the piece about taking this piece here out, you're still taking out part of the right-of-way to get to the property.
You mean the banking?
The banking.
And that's some of the stone wall there, right?
There's a stone wall here. Here's the other side of the stone wall. This is the right-of-way line.
What is this removal of stone wall that's mentioned here? I don't see that there's any stone wall that needs to be removed.
The plan as submitted here is to take down this tree here, take out this wall and to drop this elevation here so that it doesn't stick up.
That's about 20 feet, isn't it? To the tree from the driveway?
Well, the regrading is why the tree's required to be removed if, that's where those regrading lines go right through the tree. So they're feathering it back. So if you're like this, you know? That--
I get you.
On both sides.
Well, do people think that this is maybe over-engineered?
I'd be interested to hear from the neighbors, maybe some that are in attendance. I clearly understand that they object to the second entrance and breaking in there. More specifically, do they have objections to widening this and taking out the tree as you're coming out on the right and the tree as you're coming out on the left? Their thoughts on that, if anyone cares.
I don't think, or one of those trees at least. Because why you have to take out two trees is beyond me.
It's to attain the sightline.
And we've got the historical commission who's going to--
Can I ask you some questions on the compensatory action?
Yeah.
Is that applicable to the specific property? Is it applicable to the district? Where is that compensatory action or is it just vague?
It's not defined.
Not defined?
It's not specified, but I don't think, I don't think it's probably elsewhere in town.
No, it could be in the Scots Woods, right?
It probably could be.
Okay, that was just my question.
But, you know.
I knew it couldn't be anywhere in town.
Welcome.
Permissive request.
Good evening. Steve O'Donnell, Chair of the Historical Commission. I have a couple of comments and a suggestion perhaps that hasn't come out of the planning board, although I think you've come up with several good alternatives. These two trees that we're talking about at the south end of the driveway, I suggest they're closer to 30 inches of diameter rather than the 20 that's been represented. These are two large trees. The apron, if you will, where this present driveway intersects with Harland Street is about 25 feet wide. Now, we've heard a bit about single width driveways and cars passing and one of the previous speakers talked about how a single car driveway feeds three, four, five houses. If you eliminate the loop and the proposed new driveway opening, you eliminate the need to take down five trees that have been proposed. A couple for the driveway, some others to improve the sightline. And certainly the sightline from that proposed new driveway opening to the left is very small. I didn't drive into the property. I walked back and forth along Harland Street this morning and also last week. The prior suggestions about changing the angle of the driveway into the property and then turning left, and indeed, it comes in off Harland and goes up at an angle. If a second loop was constructed here in order to enhance that right turn onto Harland on the other side of this large tree, leaving a bifurcated driveway with this large tree in the middle, that would seem to alleviate some of the issues of coming out here and turning right. The sightline from the left is all the way up to Hillside Street. There's no issue coming out of that present driveway, seeing traffic coming towards you. Certainly coming south on Harland, turning in this driveway could be an issue. But if a second entrance to this existing driveway were cut in here and this were straightened out, you would undoubtedly enhance the safety. You'd eliminate taking down any tree and you'd retain the current historic forested atmosphere of Harland Street.
And that would entail breaking into the wall there, right?
It would.
But you'd be willing to balance that to save the tree?
Yes. I mean, you're talking about, I mean, a one-car driveway, I'm told, is 12 feet wide. Now, the present intersection, if you will, of the existing driveway in Harland, it's about 25 feet. And you can see why that's necessary because if you're going to make a right turn, you need space to make it. Well, if you leave that opening the way it is, straighten this out and cut a new one in, this cut here would not be significantly greater into a bank than this one down here. And indeed, I think the bank is about 10 feet.
Why would you need a second cut? I mean, assuming you don't want cars, assuming it's going to be a one-car in, one-car out and--
Then leave it the way it is. Just straighten it out on the private--
I mean, most driveways are one-car in, one-car out.
I mean, if you, if you straighten it out, you'll avoid some of the problems that are being discussed. But to take down seven trees, especially, and to cut in here would require taking a significant number of smaller trees down on the private property. And what are you, how much are you compromising the integrity of the bank by taking down these large trees which have significant root systems? And we know that this bank goes up right from the edge of Harland Street.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else want to be heard? Yes, come on up.
Just one last thing. I just want to remind the board that the engineer really opened his comments by saying it really is an issue of convenience. They want, and I did speak to the builder at one point and he said, you know, they want to have a car to be able to come in and go out at the same time. So it's aesthetics and it's convenience. So, and I think that all of the arguments against the driveway certainly trump one of convenience because they have that circular driveway with a big loop in the middle where they're going to put a fountain or something. So, I mean, it's, okay, that's all I wanted to just remind. They are talking about the convenience of it for his family to come in and out.
It is a 16-foot wide driveway, which is a pretty significant driveway. Okay, planning board, what do you want to do? We're overdue for a public hearing on zoning. And we have thrown out some ideas.
Do we have governance over the location of the new water line? Just, is this just pertaining to the driveway or do we have some sort of--
Well, presumably it can go right up the driveway.
Yeah, but we don't have to decide whether or not the water line goes as--
Unless you have to cut down a tree.
I would say that I would not be supportive of the water line location that requires the removal of a tree.
Especially when you don't have to remove a tree.
When you don't have to. And I, I think it may be clear, but I'll make it explicit. I think that it's unreasonable to support this second part of the driveway when it requires so much tree removal on a scenic road.
I think that, well, why don't we at least get a, see if we can agree on that, that the second access seems unnecessary and unreasonable.
I completely agree. I agree. I think historic stone walls, tall native trees, historic scenic road, town land, there's an existing driveway that can be used. I mean, we have plenty of reasons.
My suggestion is that we continue this so that the engineer and the applicant can discuss what they want to do without, and be able to come back on another day. What do you think?
Can we do that? Was there an action window?
There's no action window.
Okay, we just had to hear this within 21 days?
Well, no, the hearing will be kept over.
Okay. So that works for me.
Alex, I have another question. This is a, what is this application?
Scenic roads.
Application.
Application.
And is it a conditioned approval or is it just yes or no?
It can be conditioned. It can be conditioned.
Okay.
Because as you can see, one thing that you, as you say, it does mention the compensatory actions.
Thank you.
Yes.
And I'm wondering, I know that when these applications are filed, they have to go also to Historic, who we've heard from, but also Concom, and I wonder if there's any comments from the...
We probably should see if Concom...
There's no Concom issues on this site.
I understand, but it's still supposed to go to them.
They, we send stuff to them, but there is no, it's not within 100 feet of a resource area.
All right, let's see if, just see if they have any comments.
Yep.
And we'll continue this to the 15th?
This got mailed out to, we have 13 copies that get handed out.
Okay.
And Concom is one of those issues.
I think this is good. We're going to continue it to the 15th. We have the written letters. Everyone should read them. And more letters are, of course, if they come in, they should go to the applicant and as well as the board. So, the 15th, do we have a time?
7:45.
7:45. So thanks for, thanks for coming in. And we will see you again on the 15th of March. Is that the Ides of March?
It is the Ides of March.
It is.
A tuber tang.
All right. Now, where is my attendant?
Here's mine, if you like.
Okay, 333 Bush Hill Road. We have a request from Mr. Geisel to continue it to the 22nd, which would be the 15th.
The 20, will the 15th be enough time? Are they waiting on the 15th?
Because we have a lot of things...
It is better for Mr. Crispin also, because Mr. Crispin is out of the country.
Got it. I'm just making sure we weren't waiting on a report or something. Okay?
Okay, so we are intending to continue this to the 15th of March. Yes, you can come up and be heard.
Hi, Nicholas Voss, on behalf of the condominium association at 333?
Yes.
I just wanted to let it be known that the association is worried about the continued moving of the hearing, and that we'd just like to have things addressed at some point in the near future, if we could.
You understand this is an engineering issue?
I do.
And that the town is not engineering this project?
Right, yes.
Mr. Geisel is engineering the project, and until we get a drainage, an acceptable drainage system designed and installed, landscaping the area is going to be difficult.
If I could, just for the benefit of further knowledge, understand what the delay is at this time? What Mr. Geisel said that he needs to do still, or where we stand, if there was any?
He says that what he has to do is our peer review, Bill?
Right now, our peer review is going to oversee what Mr. Geisel is planning for the site. Mr. Geisel is waiting for Mr. McKenna and Mr. McKenna's attorney to come back and tell him how far they have to go. The bigger issue here is the system, as said by both Mr. Crispin and Mr. Geisel at our last meeting, is full of groundwater. The site is just bleeding water, so that the system itself is full and not treating stormwater, but treating groundwater. There's breakout at the hill before it gets to the system. There's breakout at the end where the system isn't. There's breakout up on Beacon Street Circle, which comes from the town into the property and rolls down the hill down to Truman Highway. The special permit that was issued said that the site would take care of addressing its own, its own stormwater in the future. Mr. McKenna bought the property. It's written into his site plan approval that he will address stormwater. He's addressing stormwater, but he's addressing stormwater that he created and is coming from the site. But the amount that's coming from the site has totally overwhelmed anything that he has designed or built.
We probably have the same...
You go ahead.
So, I mean, I'm imagining that a lot of this impact is from the tree removal.
No, it's before the tree removal. It's above the tree removal.
How would we possibly know that?
Because you can walk across the site, and when you walk across the site, you sink knee-deep into water.
Go ahead, Charles.
There's no trees in that particular area. No trees were taken down in that area.
I was going to just ask Bill or members of the association if any temporary measures have been taken that we asked, we particularly have asked for at all of our meetings. That's outside of the engineering, Alex, but we asked them to do the hail, I mean, hay bales and anything.
Bales and silt fence have been installed. They have been, all of the catch basins were cleaned out. All of them were bagged. Three meetings ago, we said, take the covers off the catch basins, put bags in them, put the covers back on. They have, and at every storm event, they get checked. After they check them, they call me so that I can go and look and see that, yep, the bag is empty. They put up new hay bales, they put up new silt fence. They were there today putting up silt fence and hay bales. They put up hay bales before that last heavy rain that we had. They had put up more silt fence and hay bales. We're not hearing about runoff, we're hearing about water, and it's sheet flow water that is coming to some of the Truman Highway properties. And when you go up...
Can you describe, you're saying you're not hearing about runoff, you're hearing about water? Me, that's the same thing.
I'm hearing mud. Before, we're hearing about mud.
Mud, okay, now you're hearing about water.
Now, we're hearing just water. And it is water coming in, it's sheet flow. You can watch the rivets.
Which can be worse than mud, frankly, because mud slows the water down.
It's turned into streamlets up there now.
So I do think the question is valid as to what's our recourse if we're just continuing when we are coming into the spring season. There's been discussion about the impacts in the spring season, and I...
And I know that we're playing, engineers are all butting heads up there because they're waiting for, everybody's pointing back at the court and saying that this one's suing this one, this one's suing that one. I talked to...
No, that's not true. I mean, we have our consultant working and their engineer's working.
He is, but I talked to Mr. Briansky today at 5:25, and he said, I just got back, he goes, I got the call from Mr. Geisel, and I said, well, rather than get a letter from the engineer saying I want to get a postponement, I'd rather have the letter come from the lawyer saying why the engineer is not doing his work. And he said he would have an answer tomorrow morning, but that's not answering you now.
May I speak, please?
No, at some point.
Okay.
What, I have a question for you, Bill. I don't know if you'll know the answer to this. What difference does it make what the court says? Isn't the solution...
It's who's paying for it.
I, that's fine.
I hear you.
But that doesn't affect us, right?
Doesn't affect you, but that's the engineers are working.
Give us a plan, and then we'll figure out who's going to pay for it, but that shouldn't be holding up the plan, right? Because the court's just saying who's paying for what. They're not, unless the court's saying how far you can go on to the other property, meaning the condo association landed, but I don't think that's what we're talking about here, right?
Geisel is designing the system. Our engineer is not going to design the system.
I know that, I understand that.
Our engineer is overseeing it and saying that he needs more. He needs more design.
So is Geisel not designing it because he's waiting for the court?
Yes.
That seems like more unnecessary delay. I agree with that.
Yeah, I totally agree with you.
Well, I mean, bear in mind, the building inspector is the enforcement agent, and we don't have a design system for him to require. The fact of the matter is, these houses are not going to get sold until there is proper drainage and the place has been landscaped.
I'm just worried about the houses down below getting destroyed at this point.
Right, right.
That's my concern. I'm not worried about these guys selling the houses. I'm worried about people's houses literally eroded.
We should have our engineer pay the look at this.
Right, he has taken and visited three homes down on Truman Highway. He's gone and visited two homes out on Beacon Street Circle.
Okay.
So he knows where the water's coming from.
Yep.
The water coming off of Beacon Street Circle, we thought we had a broken water pipe. It's not water. It's not a broken water pipe. It was groundwater actually forcing its way through the ground. We sent DPW out there to test the water, because we thought it was, and that's our engineering department, thought it was a broken pipe. It comes out that much that fast.
But these were existing conditions before this project even started?
Yep.
So why wasn't any of this brought up during the review or caught during the review?
He didn't engineer it. Geisel didn't engineer it, and Lisa Eggleston didn't say that he should. He was our peer reviewer.
Right, she didn't see that amount of water on that site.
I don't even know how that's possible.
The what?
How could that be possible?
Was the groundwater, is there a possibility that the groundwater pattern changed because of an impediment being put in place with the retaining wall? I'm asking, I have no idea.
Well, that's what my original response was.
Is there an opportunity that you change the pattern of the groundwater such that now it's coming, it's bursting out of the ground up above because it can't go where it used to go?
Right, right.
I would think we should ask the engineer that.
Yeah.
I mean, that sounds like a tree removal or a bang.
Or a building of a retaining wall, or whatever.
Any excavation, if your groundwater is that close to the surface, any excavation's going to impact it.
Exactly.
Right.
We have, and the people who are below this...
It wasn't bursting out of the water before. There's just no way.
That's what I'm saying.
The water wasn't bursting forth from the ground prior, and nobody saw it, I would guess.
Well, I got a site for you there. Two sites for you to come up and step in, and I know that one of them, I went up to my knee and...
On this property?
Yep.
Well, you're making my point.
But I mean, it's on the side of the hill.
I didn't want to notice.
It's on the side of the hill. You're walking on the hill, and it, it's there.
I think that conditions have changed.
The conditions have changed, that's my point.
That's not stormwater.
Lisa Eggleston didn't walk across the site and have her feet knees go up and not, so something has changed.
And not say anything, right.
Something has changed.
Something has changed, and I do think we should ask for our engineer's opinion about it.
He is looking at that.
So my grave concern is that if we're waiting for all these court rulings, I mean, what's to say that the developers, well, the developers might just say, if they lose everything, what's the point of continuing? We're just going to claim bankruptcy and walk out.
Well, if he goes bankrupt, then it will be years before it gets addressed. But there are these three houses, which presumably has the expectation of selling. And the drainage that has been discussed by our engineer doesn't seem to be so expensive as to put the thing beyond reach.
No, I agree. I think my point really was, I don't want to encourage delays for some sort of court action that might get, put us in a disadvantageous position.
I think that we should tell him that we will, if we don't, if he, if there isn't action taken by the 15th, we may just close the hearing and put a requirement in an amended site plan approval that he might be a little bit unhappy with. So I would seriously suggest that the developer be told that we really want some action here, and we want him to cooperate with his engineer. We don't want you talking to his engineer, Scott.
I won't, Alex, I won't. Trust me. That's why I have counsel.
And we want to get it done. We want to get it done now.
Yes, everybody at this table agrees.
Okay, I have three quick points. Number one, the developer has delayed this again and again, and he's not responding to you. If you remember, we have, everybody in this board has been through this numerous times, and now he's not having his professionals respond. Originally, it was due to Mr. Geisel not being able to speak with the gentleman and work out a plan for the BSC, but lo and behold, we dig down, and it's not. It's that the developer doesn't want to pay to get the proper storm interceptor put in, which the gentleman from BSC had specified. I believe there were eight items that were discussed. Of those items, one addressed the flow from the Beacon Street. There was an additional drain that was going to be going in there on the plan. The other thing was that the storm interceptor was going to be of a certain size to be able to handle that. That's from my, I'm not a drainage guy, but there were eight items specifically delineated by your expert, if you recall. I think everybody got a copy of that. The second thing is the trees. Your question, Brian, was about why did this not happen before? It was simple. It was a deeply forested area. There was never any water flow. There was never any wetlands. There was none of that stuff. What happened is, the trees were taken out in magnitude, as you've seen from some of the pictures that have been presented. That's, I don't know what the calculation is, what 112, 150-foot oak tree sucks up, but it's a whole bunch. And also slows it down because of the roots, and so the assimilation in percolation into the underlying subsurface, whatever, is enhanced as well. The final thing is, those are, sorry, those are the three things. That, so my concern is, is that this has nothing to do with the court. We're more than willing to provide you with the updated information. Alex, I know you're an attorney. It has nothing to do with this particular issue. The courts are only deciding one item, and that's what was in the complaint that was filed a year and a half ago.
Well, it does have to do with engineering, is my understanding, although I haven't seen the complaint. But we need to get this engineered, and we need to get the engineering solution built. And then we need to get the property landscaped.
Expeditiously, yes.
And this is what we want to do. And if wishes were horses, we would be in good shape.
I think you're, I think you're right on with the requirement that they be here on the 15th or we close the hearing. I think that's, you're right on. Can I, I have one more question for Bill, and this is really, probably a question that you'll need to ask Prandak. But if we don't have something on the 15th, and maybe now, frankly, what, can we, can Prandak file a complaint against the engineer who has not performed any of the requirements that he was supposed to perform in the certified plans?
Developer didn't hire him.
It doesn't matter. He signed, he certified a plan, so I don't know the, I'm asking a question, so.
I imagine the engineer will say I wasn't paid by the contractor.
I want to know the answer to the question. So if you could ask Mr. Prandak that question?
I missed the last part of that.
They've certified plans, saying as part of that, they submitted us an SWPP that said they were going to do this work.
Right.
And they didn't do it. I don't know what the enforcement action of that is, especially if they weren't paid, and who that falls to, but somebody's liable for not following that special permit. And I have to think that an engineer who signed off on it has to have some culpability.
It's a stormwater permit that goes with it, so I'm guessing that it has to go through our engineering.
The final drainage is what we're talking about, and that's what's not working.
I understand. I'm just trying to bring people to the table here, Alex, and have as many ramifications as we can for the 15th, that's all.
I agree that it would be nice to have Mr. Prandak doing something, and there is stuff that he can do. It doesn't necessarily, it doesn't design a new system. It is not a new system, it's just...
I'm not trying to slow the process down. I want the 15th to be a date where we're getting a design.
We really...
Just trying to understand what our sticks are here.
And when you're talking to Mr. Prandak, I mean, I don't know if he has any tools, but it seems to me that an unfinished construction site that causes damages to an abutters, there ought to be some tool, some recourse. I don't know what it is.
It may be an action by John Flynn.
Well, that's what I was going to suggest. That's what I was exactly going to suggest. We should consult him.
That would take significantly longer than anything that we're talking about.
We have until March 15th.
I would like to know if we can deal with it as part of the special permit? An amended special permit?
We can, yes, we can, because the drainage is part of the site plan approval.
But are we able to deal with damages along the way here?
No, we can't, we can't.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know.
We don't, we don't do damages.
I meant fixing cross-property line damages. We can't deal with that, can we? Not financial damages.
We will do everything that we can do to...
Like to understand what our limits.
Remedy the.
The wrong.
Any problems.
Thank you.
So.
You need that back.
We're going to continue to this to the 15th and I will send Bill an email specifying what the board expects to have happen on the 15th. And the condo association, you know, this guy is someone that you hired. So we're doing the best we can.
I do appreciate your evidence.
And we will continue to do so.
Excellent.
Thanks.
In a timely manner. Thank you, board, for hearing this so many times.
Thank you.
Continue to the 15th. What time, Bill?
7:30.
7:30.
So Alex, I know we're not convinced that this is going to be a speedy turnaround, but is there a possibility that Bill can also inquire with John Flynn?
I'm from the same.
What?
Also inquire with our town council, what?
Well, we have to have, now what, we want him to sue for.
No, I mean, I'm not suggesting you file a lawsuit. I'm suggesting we ask him if these people continue to not perform and not respond to these demand letters essentially, what kind of recourse do we have if the abutters are now being damaged?
Well, I mean, you can ask him, but I think that he, John would want the specifics of what the planning board, what the planning board wants.
Well, I think we want to know what our options are. We want an engineer.
I don't think John gives options.
No, those are going to come from Mr. Prondak.
What?
That's, Mr. Prondak has to give him what his issues are.
Right, I think that's right because Prondak is the enforcement officer. So it goes through Prondak to John Flynn.
Right, so I'm just saying, on behalf of the town of Milton, there's somebody who can provide information to him and express, I don't care who it is. Can we ask somebody to consult with our town council, explain the situation, tell them where we are and ask him, what are there other options available to us? Because the ones that we're using haven't been working so well.
Litigation is obviously an option and there are any number of things we can litigate. It's going to cost the town money and it's going to take years.
Well, I would suggest that doing nothing is going to cost the town money ultimately as well. So I would just like to know what our options are.
But we're not doing nothing.
I know, Alex, I don't want to argue with you. I'm saying that if we spend the next month having a conversation with a man who already works for us to explore things, other alternatives, we won't be wasting another month to come March 15th if they don't do anything, then to say, now what do we do?
Well, it's a lot of work to put together.
Oh, my gosh.
Maybe you can put together a total.
Sure. I will show up, tell me where to go and I will get the file.
It's a written, it's a written description of everything that's going on.
Which we should already have. This has been a very contentious situation. If we don't have a record of it, then that's a major problem for us.
Well, I can tell you that this goes back a long time and it's a significant project and I'm not going to undertake it because I'm perfectly satisfied with telling the guy that he'd better do something by the 15th or we're going to take measures. And if on the 15th he doesn't, you know, we're not satisfied, then I think that consulting with John will be, will be a possibility, but I don't see any reason to do it right now because it's a very significant amount of work to prepare a case, to get a legal opinion. Because you have to outline all the legal documents, you have to summarize them, the pertinent parts, because he's not going to just sit here and read hundreds of pages of stuff. He needs to have it pointed out to him. This is a significant legal task.
So perhaps there's a misunderstanding between us. I wasn't expecting that there be some significant legal task. I was expecting that the lawyer who works for the town of Milton, somebody in Milton, maybe Mike Dunheer, I don't know who, could call, spend 15 or 20 minutes describing our situation and get his initial read on what our options might be for our discussion on March 15th.
Right.
Perhaps we can do that on March 15th then, if this is such a massive undertaking. That's not what I was requesting.
All right, well, I don't think it's possible, but if it is possible, then someone else is going to have to do it.
I have the discussion with Mr. Prondak tomorrow morning over the size of the system, the system not working and coming up with a solution. If there is no solution to that amount of water, what is our next step? He'll have an answer and I'll ask him what his next step is when his solution does not work.
So I think you're missing the mark.
Yeah.
That's not the issue. The issue is what do we do if he doesn't design the system that we're asking?
Right.
Has nothing to do with what should the design be?
No, he's going to come up with.
What if they do not respond to us by March 5th, or March 15th? Then what do we do?
I think on March 15th, you close the hearing and we basically put together an order that says, we're going to design your system for you and you're going to build it.
No, we're not going to be able to do that because we don't have an engineer. We're going to have to do the amended site plan approval and file it and then give it to Prondak to enforce. It may be appealed, which may stay.
So just out of curiosity.
I mean, I can.
What would we even say in a special, in a modified special permit? They'll fix it? I mean, what would we say? We don't have a design, that's my concern. So if he doesn't show up on the 15th with a design.
You point out a problem.
Yes, I do.
That's what we're trying to get.
Exactly.
I mean, it's hard to say this is what we want you to do if we don't know what it is.
I agree.
And you know, I have litigated real estate cases. I could, you know, tell you certain avenues that you could pursue, but it takes time and you have to, you have to go through all the documents, you have to go through all the permits and you have to establish what you think the facts are.
I still am concerned about the down slope abutters and the longer that this goes on, the more exposure that they have and they've come to this town for, I think for quite some time, asking for the town to address it. I'm less concerned, to be honest with you, about people who are less impacted by it even though they have, you know, an unfinished building site next to them. So I really would like to know if Joe Prondak has any tools that can help with those immediate abutters.
Okay.
I agree. I mean, the condo association owners, owners of those condominiums are part of this application. They are owners on this application. So while they have not put themselves in this position, they own this problem and.
It's that entire property that is responsible for water being on their neighbors.
Correct.
So.
Right, but the abutters have no role in this, had nothing to do with this and they're the ones being harmed.
Not going to get anything out of it.
Exactly.
And there's nothing we can do to help them right now.
I would just like to understand, I would like to understand if there's something that Mr. Prondak.
What we're doing here is helping them.
No, I know, I'm just saying, if.
But it takes some time.
The applicants are not paying their contractors and they're just refusing to do work, we're just sitting here saying, well, next meeting you have to come, next meeting you have to come.
But I wanted to understand if the building department or anybody in town has recourse, if you are not allowed to change the drainage on your property to dump more water on your neighbor's property. That's not allowed. So regardless of who's doing it, who's responsible on that property, what would be the recourse if it were me dumping on my neighbor? What's the recourse to my neighbor?
Your neighbor would sue you.
No, but there's the town also, that's it?
Yeah.
The town has no, when they've issued any building permit?
They'll sue the abutter and at some point they'll probably sue Milton.
So when the town has.
That's what I'm saying, it's going to be exciting either way.
Well, often there isn't a permit.
Well, in this case, there is. So maybe me changing is not the best example because here we do have a permit and a significant part of the permit had to do with stormwater.
Right, and Davis is saying you didn't comply with your permit and that noncompliance has damaged us and therefore, Mr. Developer, you have to make us whole. Or they could say, I mean, this is, there are a million, you know, legal possibilities. Or you could say you don't want to sue the developer for some reason. You say the town approved this and therefore the town has to make us whole.
The deepest pocket for all of them.
Or you do them both.
But what people have asked us for is not to look for deep pockets. They've asked us for, look for a solution to get water to come off the property.
To Alex's point.
If we had, if we had an engineer that designed a system and a contractor to build it and a, you know, a slash fund to pay for it, it'd be good. But we have none of those things.
So we don't have, there's no fee for noncompliance?
The court can assess a, can assess noncompliance with a permit.
For the town, though, didn't we say at the beginning?
You revoked the permit. That's what usually happens.
But there is no nominal fee?
When there's noncompliance.
I thought there was like a nominal fee that's applied by the day for noncompliance.
No, 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 that's, that's, oh, I see. Yeah, well, if.
And at the time, we thought that was so small.
That's a zoning violation. And this is, of course, a permit violation.
I thought there was some sort of fee.
There is a zoning violation.
It's, special permit is zoning, isn't it?
Well, that's the thing. I swear, Alex looks like an early.
Territory.
Look, this is, if we were, if this was law school and we were discussing, what would you do? Everyone would have an idea.
Right. Okay, we should probably move on.
No, the reason why I bring it up is because I thought in the beginning of these conversations, there was some small fee that we could apply to this for noncompliance or nonperformance or whatever. And it was so small that it was sort of laughable.
Well, that was John Thompson and the SWPP.
But it was a daily fee, I believe.
I think that John Thompson could look at the SWPP.
There you go, there's another, we just have to layer on.
That daily fee, I bet it's getting a little.
Well, that's what I'm saying. If it's 10 bucks a day, it's starting to add up now.
And I bet it's more than 10.
All right, let's continue this to the 15th and let's hear about the zoning. Okay, 7:45?
Yeah.
Now, I had, actually I brought, I had the packet of zoning, there it is. Okay, now we've got a.
We're on 475 Adams.
Anybody else need one?
That's going to be continued.
Okay, can I ask a question?
No, I have a.
When is it continued to?
Which one?
475 Adams.
RJ.
Can I ask a question? Can I ask, just ask you one question on it before we continue the hearing? Do you know if there's been any conversations with either traffic commissioner or town engineer on that, on that question I asked? There has been no conversations?
There's been no conversation.
Okay, so just before we continue the hearing, on the record, I strongly recommend that those conversations happen.
Conversation has taken place between, it is, it's taken place between me and.
I understand. I'm talking to the.
DPW director.
Public right now.
All right, it is not with Congress.
Okay, it should. That's all I'm saying.
Okay, who is it supposed to occur? This has to do with marking up Adam Street or something? So this is, who is in charge of that? DPW?
Marking up Adam Street would be DPW.
You know, striping it.
DPW.
That sort of thing.
DPW.
I want them to understand what the requirement is, that's all. The con was, understand what it is that DPW has to do, that's all.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, now we've continued 475 till when?
March 15th.
The 15th, is it?
It's March 15th.
Or the 8th?
The 8th, yeah.
At what time?
7:30.
7:30, okay. The who's the club we're going to discuss next time?
No, I'm sorry, it's 7:45. 7:45.
We're going to discuss possible overlay zoning a little later, but we have someone who wants to talk about overlay zoning now. So we'll, why don't we talk about overlay zoning now and then we can have.
You're going to.
Well, let me just, let me just say a few things about the zoning amendments. The ice house amendment, I think, is going to go. Temporary signs, I didn't know there was a definition in the zoning bylaw of temporary sign and it is, it's going to be changed before this goes forward. So I'm going to recommend that the board ask the warrant committee or ask the selectmen to withdraw the article or ask the warrant committee to recommit this thing to the board for further study so we can change that. The zoning map amendment, we're going to.
Vote in support.
We're going to post it. It's going to be on the screen.
Awesome.
But we're not changing the zoning map.
No, we have to.
Yes.
We have to verify it's correct, that's all.
Right. The traffic study revolving fund.
I see to a 137.
Yes, that's yours.
All right, great. So I want to thank Lauren again for pulling the information that she did. It was very helpful. I read it all on the plane and it did two things. One, it convinced me even more that we need a revolving fund and two, it convinced me that as part of a revolving fund, we also need a second document. Second, whether it's a modification to our special permit language or something. So I'd like to work, I'd like to ask the warrant, I'd like to do exactly what Alex just said, either have the selectmen withdraw it or have the warrant committee recommit it for us to further study and I'd like to work with Lauren on this starting immediately so that we're potentially ready to go, if we have a special town meeting in June or July, or worst case, October and we'll get something ready for the board to consider right away.
Okay, municipal energy, we don't need to take a, the citizen petition on the yacht club is not zoning and then we have the zoning moratorium, which we can discuss, but after we hear about the overlay, because it does seem to me that the overlay, well, what do you think? Shall we do the zoning first or shall we do the overlay?
Well, there's someone here for both, so I guess.
Let's do the overlay. Come on up and talk about the overlay, if you like.
Okay, Susan Harvey from 69 Antwerp Street, part of the East Milton Neighborhood Association. And I was at another planning board meeting and it was suggested to us to come to the planning board meeting to ask for assistance in an overlay, helping us with an overlay for East Milton Square. So that's why I'm here and Jim here.
My name's, yeah, mine is Jim Coyle, also a member of the working group for the MNA Association. I think the, it's critical that we have an overlay district in there and I just want to read something, sort of right out of the master plan. The overlay district needs to be the first step in implementing the master plan for East Milton Square, which has many elements in addition to mixed use development, which is the one we've been discussing for six months now, I guess. Will also provide the opportunity for public input on parking, traffic, image, senior housing, walkability, bicycle amenities and a better connection between the two sides of Milton, which are all part of the master plan that was passed by the town meeting several years ago.
No, it wasn't. It was approved by the planning board, but it was never passed by the town meeting.
Okay, well, I'm glad you clarified that, but it's on record. I would imagine some of the members of the planning board, of this board here were key this board here were key players in writing that master plan. And I think it's about time they went ahead with it. I notice there's, there's about, four out of the fifteen elements on the concept map for East Milton Square involve parking. And a lot of my neighbors, it's come up a lot of times, our meeting with a developer was canceled for next Tuesday. So I think we're, we're probably going to go ahead and meet with our community and see what, and inform them as to where we are. I'm not going to get into any of the details of that, but there's a lot of elements in existing overlay districts, section three I and J, that I think need to be in this plan and have not even been addressed yet in, in the meetings we've been having. We haven't gotten that far. So there's a lot of good things that we can learn from the existing, the, the other two ordinances that I believe, they may not be exactly overlay district, but that's what I call them. And we can learn from that and from the surrounding towns and come up with a very good product. It will take time, take a lot of effort from a lot of people, but we, as Susan just said here, to have some, to work with the planning board constructively to produce this product is absolutely essential. And it's in keeping with the master plan that is already out there. And, and that's mainly speaking for myself here, but I think I reflect what a lot of people in East Milton feel.
Yeah, so I'd like to just kind of parse this a little bit because I think we've got a neighborhood here that's coming in and asking for the planning board's assistance. And I think to create an overlay district, I think that's something that we should consider outside of whatever's going on with, with Falcone. Perhaps they tie together, but even if they don't end up tying together, the neighborhood is interested in talking about something. So I just wanted to parse that quickly. I think it's, if they, if they want someone from the planning, if they want to have the planning board participate in that process, I think it's a great idea if they're going to go through it. And whether it relates to Falcone or not, I think is, is kind of irrelevant. But I think they may end up tying together.
I completely disagree. Completely disagree.
Well, bear in mind that a overlay is going to cost some significant money because we have to have an urban planner, because we have to identify the district. I mean, the food center will be part of the district. There may be residential areas around the square that are going to be part of the overlay district. And then you're going to have to determine what a proper zoning would be. And the, I don't think that either of you write zoning. I write zoning, but it's, it isn't easy. And you have to identify, you have to identify what you're zoning for. I personally think that you might consider whether or not the business district zoning should be changed for that area. And, yes.
I'm sorry, finish first, your thought first.
I, I think the business district zoning is, is not good. And the only reason that, I mean, it allows a density far greater than Falcone is proposing. And the only reason that it's not used more is that there is no real market for commercial only. And the parking. Without parking, you can't build these areas out. So I think that the business, I, I'm not sure an overlay is necessary. It may be that what you want to do is investigate whether or not the business district zoning is, should be changed.
Well, I did go to the Milton Landing Board, Planning Board meeting, and it did seem like the overlay helped a lot. And, you know, it's, we're just trying to keep Milton consistent. And so there seemed to be overlays in other neighborhoods.
I made eight pages of comments on that overlay, which I submitted to the planner.
Yeah.
And they weren't necessarily all positive comments. I don't think that, I don't think the Milton Village overlay is ready for you to use as a model. And I suggest that East Milton is different from Milton Village. And that if you want to do the job properly, it's going to cost some dough. You're going to have to do a parking study. You can't just say, you know, parking's a terrible problem and this is what we want to do about it.
We've been asking for that, haven't we?
Two years ago, I spoke at the.
I understand, but.
Asked the same question and there's still no progress. What's wrong with Milton?
Money. Money.
Let's get.
You can, well, no, but you could have asked the town to appropriate money for the parking study. The Neighborhood Association probably should have done that because you.
But see, we need guidance and that's why we're here at the planning board. Because we don't know.
I would like to speak to that. Part of this board's responsibility is to write zoning and to work with planners to develop zoning. And it's the community's responsibility to give us their input into that process. It is not their responsibility to write zoning or to lead that process. They've been asking for this board to do its job. I think we need to listen to their requests. This is not the first time we've heard it. It's come to us in email, it's come to us in other meetings. I think it's our responsibility to take action based on their requests.
And that was the point I was trying to make. So I hear you vehemently disagreeing with me, but I think you misunderstand my point.
Yeah.
My point is that, my point is that this needs to happen, whether or not there's a project proposed or not. The fact that there's a project proposed only makes it more important. But I don't want, to Cheryl's point, this has been ongoing and ongoing and ongoing. Falcone might be bringing it to your head, but this is something that we should have been doing a long time ago, to prepare for the inevitable reality that someone was going to propose a project here.
And this might be the first of many. And I think by keeping everything within a box here, so that there are some objectives on, on here. The basic parameters in those ordinances on, on light coverage, FAR, there's many elements in there that could be applied to this. And I think it's unfair to developers to not have that vision from the board worked out in detail. It's a very nice master plan for the town of Milton here. But what's happened? I think there was money approved for, to do something in Milton Village. I think Cheryl told us about that previously, where there's some, money was approved at a previous town meeting to get that going. Maybe we need some money in the next town meeting here as something to get going.
Look, we're going to get, hopefully, an appropriation. If the board sees fit to apply it to an East Milton overlay, we'll be able to, we'll be able to get started. Currently, the dough is, is a problem because we have three thirty-three Bush Hill Road to pay for.
In the meantime, I, I think if the neighborhood is working on this and asking for planning board support, and the planning board is interested, and the planning board thinks we should be responding, I would suggest that maybe we should be creating a subcommittee of people on the command, planning board to be participating in that process, to inform them where they may need studies, where they may need money, what the process is going to be.
But my point still is, you're talking about informing them as if they have to lead the process. This board should be leading the process.
Well, I agree with that, but I think that, but, but by creating a subcommittee that would work with the neighborhood, the subcommittee can then report back to this planning board what the objectives are, what the goals are of the community, and then the board can do its job.
And this, this board and the board of selectmen have the approval authority to authorize expenditure of funds that were approved by town meeting for the use of implementing the master plan. Bill, we have, how much in the current fiscal year and how much do we have in our, in the budget for the next fiscal year?
Fifty in the next. We have, I think we have fifty in this one.
And we have, what, ten committed for the?
That's the master plan.
Right. But there's no demands for those funds except for ten for the war ferry, right? Because we have the large matching grant with MAPC, right?
We only have five more months.
We only have five more months, that's right. And we've been talking about, at the master plan committee, about whether there's some additional work to advance that, to do some traffic analysis, which we've talked about. Right, seven on the traffic. And we're talking about, we're getting a proposal for marine engineering, which we'll bring back to the planning board and the board of selectmen because of the short time period that's left in the fiscal year, just to keep advancing that piece of the work. But East Milton Square, if there's funds that could be allocated to that in, in the timeframe, any timeframe of this fiscal year yet, and then the next fiscal year. Part of what we, the master plan committee all agreed was that part of those funds for the traffic actually extend to East Milton Square because it's Adams Street is the, is the.
It's the spine.
Is the spine. So I do think that we would have some funds.
So you want to, who shall, you're suggesting an RFP for a parking consultant or for an urban planner? Because we'll do it. We'll, we'll get it out there and we'll get you the dough and the master plan implementation committee can get to work.
So I would suggest that if we wanted to have a subcommittee that works with the neighborhood to develop a scope of work.
I think the board should determine it now.
All right, well, then the scope of work, Bill, I'm sure you have an RFP draft from what our other one, our other overlay district. It'll be more involved for East Milton. It'll need to involve the traffic right away.
And let's discuss it on the eighth. And then put it out because we've only got five months and we've got fifty thousand dollars.
No, we don't have fifty.
Thirty-ish. We have thirty-ish, right?
Thirty-ish.
But that would roll into, but, but if it's a seventy-five thousand dollar study, that will roll into next year, next fiscal year. We have another fifty potentially.
Well, we have to, I think what we need to do.
But you have to decide whether or not you want to spend all your money here because it's going to cost some dough. We're going to have to get a traffic study and we're going to have to have an urban planner.
I don't think we have to have the, the funds, we don't, I'm not certain that we have to use the funds that are for this fiscal year. I think what the neighborhood's asking for is for us to take action. So I think the first thing we need to do is have a listening session with the Neighborhood Association, see what they would like us to address. Then we develop an RFP around that listening session so that we understand what their concerns are. And then we see what the right, well, actually, even before the RFP, what are the right scope of services, what number of services? So is it just a traffic engineer and a planner? Or is there some other analysis that needs to be done?
So could I add?
No, go ahead.
So I've been meeting with the neighborhood quite a bit over the last six months. And I'm hearing that this area of town is, is very interested in, you know, expert, high level, you know, urban planner to, you know, work with the neighborhoods, the business owners, the stakeholders, and come up with a plan for parking, pedestrian-friendly, walk flow, traffic flow, and to come up with a design on how to revitalize buildings that work with a mixed-use concept. You know, and these are my words, but the town village, but that's kind of what I'm hearing, is something that feels very much like a town. I think a lot of us have been, have been working and looking at different visuals and thinking of, how can this work? How can this work? And the Falcone exercises.
Pushed us.
Has pushed us, but, I mean, it, it was a good, good study for me in, in learning that when you go from three stories to four stories, it's a very different experience on the street. And they're, and we've all been searching for a way to somehow make that work. And so I, I hear again and again and again that they really would love to be able to turn to an expert that was possibly on a retainer or someone who has had success in this area in towns and who's, who's sort of been through it and can, and can sort of take us through it. You know, one of the things that I hear a lot of the neighborhood saying is that it's been, you know, we're ten years too late on everything. It's not just parking, it's not just traffic, it's everything. We're just ten years, we're just, the ball's been dropped and they just are looking for So, so this urban planner idea sounds like a good one.
I think we should, we should get out with a RFP. And I think that once we have someone on board, we can have that visioning session with the neighborhood. But I don't think having a visioning session with the neighborhood without a team in place, at the very least, a planner who can hear what you have to say and, and knows how to, how to go about doing it. Because this is, this is hard work. And overlay, rezoning Milton Village isn't something you just do around the table of.
Yeah, I understand that. And I have been reading the master plan bill. So the map here, it does mention parking for East Milton Square in four different places. And it does say, consider developing mixed-use overlay districts to expand shopping. And so, I mean, all of the stuff that we're talking about was brought up three years ago. And so we're just trying to bring it back to the surface and.
Right.
Let's, let's get some RFPs for a planner and for traffic. It seems to me, and, and discuss them further at the, on the eighth. I personally don't think that, I, I think Falcone should be considered on its merits. And I don't think you're saying to the Falcones, we're thinking about doing an overlay, therefore get lost. I think that it would behoove your Neighborhood Association to continue your discussions with them and see if you can't get to some sort of reasonable accommodation.
Well, I think what everybody has said is that they're the example. So whatever happens, it kind of opens up what other developers are going to do.
Well, it can or, it can or it can't.
But do you?
Well, that's why we're.
I would be interested to hear your thoughts on that. What, what do you think of parallel discussions going on at the same time? So I know you have a lot on your plate.
Yeah.
And I know that's a lot to ask. And they're both very big tasks. But what are your thoughts on having a Falcone discussion going and an overlay discussion going on?
I think it would be helpful because they're not budging. And so it's, I think we just need to have more facts to back up the changes that we're asking for.
Knowledge is good.
I can give you one example. They did a traffic study, which they shared with us. The town of Milton did a traffic study in conjunction with the state. I don't know the details. They were adjacent. And when we asked questions back at the public meeting in September, it was a, where there was a, the Howard Stein Hutchins gave a presentation back then, a lot of the questions couldn't be answered because they were confined to a box. I thought that it just really turned me off. I said, well, here, I wrote an email to Bill yesterday about this subject here. Combine all the, we got two pieces with a puzzle here now. So now we got a bigger box and a lot more information. There was a lot, very lot of valuable information in the traffic study that the Falcone folks paid for. I think the property owners, the business owners need to be involved in it too, not just the.
Yeah, the stakeholders.
Not just the people that live in their neighborhood. So there's a rapport is built up and a better interaction there. We, we don't need to be enemies. We need to work constructively together. And we, as taxpayers, expect this board and the board of selectmen to, to reach out. And I think this is absolutely essential here, that the, the, the planning board have a little, a subcommittee. I don't know how that works. I've never asked that before, but that's your business. But so that we have constructive input. But to proceed with one project, I think could lead to problems.
Well, if, if you don't proceed with one project, I think you're going to be making a huge mistake. And I think that you will regret it. And I think that it will probably go a long way to making an overlay impossible.
So do we, sorry, go ahead.
Can I just make a comment? I just am in strong favor of the overlay discussion. I'm in strong favor of engaging a planner that can really drive this forward in a comprehensive way with the businesses, with the residents, and start to facilitate that healthier relationship. I think there's a couple of resources that might be helpful to you that are just online. The state has a Smart Growth Toolkit, which is sort of a layperson's planner's guide, but it really applies nicely to East Milton. And it's something that you should take a look at if you just want to share it even with your neighborhood associations so people can flip through and look at the different considerations that planners would use when you're developing an overlay. There's also sample zoning language in there that just might spark you to think of new things as you're going through the Falcone negotiations, but also the, the consideration of an overlay. And those are very accessible to laypeople. You don't have to be, you know, a planner to, to understand it. So it's just a resource for you that might be useful as you're considering things in the very near term. But in the long term, I would be thrilled if we could use these resources to advance some of these more technical questions. I think East Milton should be a priority for us.
You know, and there's a lot of things that have come up that we haven't even gotten to on our discussion with the Falcone. We're just ordinary citizens. We don't have a lawyer working for us. We don't have engineers working for us, nor do we have the resource to do that. And I'm going to give you one example here. They're going to be built, it was building an underground parking garage adjacent to other buildings owned by other people. And is the town of Milton prepared as a town with the right resource to do that? There's a lot of elements in the, in the existing ordinances that you have about the, the peer review there, that all the outside consultants that need to be hired by the town of Milton to implement any project. I see some examples tonight where there's small, smaller projects in dollars. But here it is, a, it's almost like putting wall-to-wall carpeting between other buildings out there with almost zero open space. I think that's starting off on the wrong foot. And that's one of the impasses that we have there right now with the Falcone company, just one of several. I'm very concerned about their construction management capabilities. They, they described this project as something that you'd have in a city. That really turned a lot of people off. This is at a prior meeting several months ago, you know, and there's a. And there's been a lot of missteps in this effort already here. And my, that's just my opinion, that's not everybody else's. But I think proper input from the Board of Selectmen and this board, to step up to the plate here and join us to help have a better vision for East Milton. When you go from Quincy-
Keep, keep working with the Falcones because that is the process that we have embarked on. The neighborhood is, is out front in the discussions with the Falcones. We're prepared to, to assist, but we want, we hopefully want you to reach some sort of accommodation with the Falcones. There is, they do have an option and they have plenty of time. It's a, it's a, they've, they've got tenants, so it isn't as though they're, they're hurting. So it's just, it makes sense to pursue your negotiations with the Falcones. We will, we will take steps to do an overlay in a way that meets the reasonable expectations of the neighborhood.
Alex, to the point though about there being average citizens, no disrespect, not having the resources of a development team and then asking them to negotiate. They're asking for us to help them, a couple of us from this board to help them. So I don't think we've answered that. Are we going to-
You have a position that you're going to-
No, I'm not, I'm not making-
I mean, you want to negotiate what you as a resident of wherever you live want for that area.
I'm saying that this, that the neighbors have asked this board for a couple of people to work with them, and we have not addressed that request. And I'm suggesting that we have a conversation about that request.
Can I just ask a question? So I hear two requests. So one is to help and assist them with the Falcone property project negotiation. And one is to help with the overlay discussion study. And one is to merge them. Where are you at on that? I, I can understand parallel, but I, I don't, I don't know that the board necessarily does get involved in negotiations with a neighborhood group and a developer.
I don't think you can. How can you? How can you then be on a board that is going to vote on a specific application?
We're going to be asked to write zoning.
I understand. You can do that, but you can't-
So we say, you guys hand us the zoning, you want us to write? And we're, we're not going to offer any input on that zoning.
I mean, is there a middle ground?
See, I'm talking about Falcone when I say-
I am, I am too. That we're going to be asked to write zoning around something that is a process driven by the developer.
Well, I think we want to work with you so we understand more of what to discuss with Falcone. And the other thing is, we're only two people. There are hundreds of people in our neighborhood that are waiting for more news, you know? And they're, we're getting there, but we're not there yet. And so I think, you know, we just want other people to know the process and what's going on.
You do have a spokesman. And that spokesman, if you're waiting for something, that spokesman should communicate with us. Because we can't just hear from hundreds of people that we want this, we want that.
No, absolutely. That's why-
And I, I think that, my, my advice is see if you can't reach an agreement with the Falcones. You'd be, the neighborhood would really benefit if that could happen. And the overlay discussion will go ahead, and it will go ahead on a separate track.
But one thing I would say, Alex, if we, couldn't we commit to them? That they can come up with the general parameters that they would be comfortable with the Falcones. But when, normally, we work on the much greater detail than what I would expect them to have expertise to negotiate. So for example, for the Ice House, there was a lot of discussion that went into the zoning for the Ice House, or the Carberry property. And so it seems to me that the neighbors at least ought to have what they've come to an agreement or acceptance of in terms of density, you know, height, use, number of units, how much retail, just the sort of the-
Parking spaces.
Parking, so the general, here's the general scope of a project that we feel like we're comfortable, we can work with. Then we want the planning board to take that general understanding and make it into something stronger. Rather than have, I mean, what it sounds like is, like, you know, it's almost like you guys go figure all of this out and just bring it back to us and we'll codify it for you.
I would like to hear from the neighborhood spokesman. I'd like to hear from Steve Reins if this is what he wants.
Okay.
You've, you've put it on the, you've put it on the record.
This was, this was-
Okay, okay.
We're here tonight because-
You're over the discussion.
You wanted to discuss the overlay.
Right.
I think that we've discussed it. We've discussed a number of other things. And I think that we'll now move on to the zoning.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you for coming in.
Twenty-one Barton Street.
All right. Hearing on the zoning. Anyone want to be heard on any of these zoning articles? Yes.
I'm Phil Joe Henning, twenty-three Parkway Drive. My friends, my neighbors, and I came up with a zoning article that we signed and submitted to the town to be in the warrant. And the basic tenet of our, of our article is that we're asking for two things. One is that the town put a moratorium on zoning changes until such time as the town can look at zoning town-wide. And I, I think, listening to all the discussions tonight, I really think it's, it's an important thing. I've looked at other moratoriums, and I know that other towns have, have instituted moratoriums. I know it's possible. I don't know if our situation is identical to those towns, but they have been successfully implemented in other towns at other times. And the reason why I, I think we should look at zoning comprehensively is that we have a master plan that's just, that's been completed. And it seems to me that we could look at the town and we could look at the master plan and we'd say, okay, these areas of town would not be impacted by any changes from the master plan. We can set these areas aside. These areas will be impacted, and we need to look at zoning in those areas. And we would implement whatever changes would be necessary to assist in the implementation of the master plan long-term. I think it makes sense because, number one, we're spending way too much time as, as a town on these issues. The planning board, the Board of Selectmen, the warrant committee, the zoning board of appeals are all spending way too much time. And, and we just got finished a discussion with East Milton saying that we're ten years behind, or twenty years behind. I don't remember exactly the number. Why is that? Could it be that we're spending way too much time on project-by-project zoning, public hearings, when we could be looking at zoning comprehensively? I think we need to reduce the amount of time we're spending on zoning for individual projects. The other, the other thing that concerns me, point number two, is that the town is delegating land use planning to developers. We're not doing it ourselves as a town. We're not deciding what we want as residents and as a town. We're allowing developers to come in and push it on us. I'm not sure that's the right direction. I think that's putting the cart before the horse. I think we should decide as a town how land will be used zone by zone. Number three, we talk about a lot of conditions put on projects. We talk about conditions of an overlay for East Milton. And it is my experience that these conditions are not enforced. And, and the town appears to be incapable of enforcing the conditions on special permits and any other special zoning arrangement. And I don't think, I think we're asking them to do something Herculean. Because if, if you have to be aware of all these conditions, plot by plot, area by area, it seems almost impossible to enforce. You know, rules by zone need to be uniform across the zone. That's easier to enforce. But what we have done is we've created something so complex that it cannot be enforced. So I, I think it's, it's a big mistake to create an overlay zone with special conditions, et cetera, et cetera. And then suddenly, who's going to enforce it? My experience, nobody. And, and we see that actually with the discussion tonight about Brashill Road. You know, we have a huge problem, and no one can help them. We have residents in surrounding properties, and they're left to fend for themselves. And, and that's wrong. That should not be. So I, I think we need to create conditions by zone that are enforceable because they're simple and they're zone-wide. The fourth concern I have is, you know, what happens with projects like Ice House? What happens with projects like the CVS at the synagogue? What, what happens is that people get, neighbors get pitted against one another over a project. That's wrong. You know, suddenly, we have people fighting and arguing about, you know, the Blue Hills Parkway, how many cuts there'll be in the curb, traffic. That shouldn't be either. You know, as a town, we should try to resolve these kinds of problems once and for all and move forward. There may be disputes over zoning changes in light of the master plan. But the master plan has more or less been accepted. So it, it seems to me we have to accept the consequences of the master plan. And, and so for that reason, there may be some discord. But it won't be project for, by project going out year after year after year, which I, I think is a bad approach. I think also, the town gets dragged into complications as exist with the Ice House. I know Katie Conlin disagrees with my assessment. I read the letter from the Attorney General. It appears to me that the Attorney General is saying that the Ice House zoning cannot be accepted as it is because it's discriminatory in terms of housing being offered to the public. She thinks it was not rejected. I, I think it sounds like it was. Nevertheless, it's another issue that the town needs to become embroiled in. And it's for the sake of the developer, not, not anyone else. My sixth concern, I think, involves all of you. And it has to do with transparency. And I was very concerned, reading the, the Boston Globe, and it said, in Milton, where he lived until this year, and he is Senator Joyce, he allegedly approached developer John Morrell about buying and redeveloping the Milton Women's Club, a historic building that had fallen into disrepair, the indictment says. Joyce pressured the planning board, the Milton Planning Board, to allow Morrell to take actions that would allow Morrell to build four houses on the site. In return, the indictment says, Morrell agreed to pay Joyce a kickback, a 2014 Jeep from one of his dealerships. Morrell also agreed that Joyce's wife, Mary, a local realtor, would be a sales broker.
I would suggest, Mr. Joe Henning, I would suggest that you're reading the Boston Globe. You read it at home and continue to comment on the zoning before us.
Okay. In the Wicked Local, it, it claimed that, that Alex was much more directly involved in that, that press-
Mr. Joe Henning, comment on the zoning, okay?
I am.
All right, you do that.
I'm talking about lack of transparency. I'm talking about lack of rules. When, when rules are developed, project by project, when rules are developed, area by area, what, what happens is that they can be influenced through favors.
Are you suggesting that I was influenced, Mr. Joe Henning?
That's what it says in the paper.
Well, are you suggesting that because it is a lie?
The indictment says it.
The indictment does not say it.
The corruption indictment-
It does not say it, Mr. Joe Henning.
Okay.
You are out of order.
Okay. I think that the board should strive to be above such things by creating uniform rules that are written down, are followed, and they're enforced. And that's the way I see it.
Okay, thank you.
Can I comment?
You have a question for him?
Oh, I just wanted to comment.
Well, let's, we'll see if anyone else wants to, wants to be heard on this. Anyone else want to be heard about the zoning? Mr. Joe Henning, you're done.
Wait, I'd like to ask him a question, if I may, Alex. What the zoning actually says, I believe, is different than what you've said. Because what it says, and I'm going to read it. This moratorium is intended to provide restrictions that would allow the town of Milton, town, adequate time to consider whether to allow any further changes to the bylaws that would permit the introduction or continuation of any commercial uses and/or activities in residential zoning districts, the type and extent of the commercial uses and/or activities that could be allowed, and the location and conditions for such commercial uses and/or activities. So it sounds like you're looking for a very specific intention here, which is not what you said in your opening statement. So can you clarify that?
Sure. I'm talking about zoning. And what we're talking about in a lot of these cases is commercial uses in residential areas. So I'm saying that in light of the master plan, it might be time to look at where commercial uses will be and where residential uses will be. As I mentioned to the warrant committee, the treasure of this town is in the original 1938 zoning bylaws. What they did was make sure that we had this residential community adjacent to Boston. It protected the tranquility of the town. We could all move to Waymouth if we wanted. We could move to Quincy if we wanted. We could do that. Those are primarily, let's say, commercial. We live here because we treasured certain things about this town. And what I'm talking about is an endeavor to preserve that. There may be some legitimate commercial uses that should be in certain areas of the town. Let's evaluate that and make those areas commercial.
You do realize that the commercial-
This is a delay on, I've been discussing zoning with, this is not, he doesn't want to rezone the town.
So my, my point here is that the zoning that was enacted in 1938 came over a town which was pretty well-built in many areas already. And there were uses already there that the zoning didn't take into account, which is how we have pre-existing non-conforming businesses in residential districts. Because many of them were already there when the zoning was brought in. So it's not that the zoning code decided that it was better to, I mean, it was actually from my understanding, some people have suggested as a protective measure to, for a very specific part of town. But the reality is, a lot of even our residential doesn't meet current zoning. So it puts people, their lots are non-conforming, their house heights and setbacks are non-conforming. So our, our zoning, while it was a good intention for certain things in 1938, I agree with you, it needs to be adjusted over time. But you seem very specific to be about commercial uses in residential districts, not about our zoning challenges in other areas. So again, this moratorium is only applying to businesses in residential districts that are pre-existing non-conforming?
Pre-existing non-conforming, how many exactly are the properties in this town?
We, we did an analysis of that two years ago.
I want to say, I don't remember, but I thought it was-
Twenty or thirty?
I thought it was thirty-something, but I don't remember.
There aren't that many, is the bottom line. There aren't that many. So we're not talking about-
So you're not really looking for-
We're not talking about pre-existing non-conforming because the number is very few.
But you're looking only at that according to this. You're not really looking at-
Talking about, when we're talking about a project like the Ice House, the Ice House really was not pre-existing non-conforming. It was pre-existing non-conforming as an Ice House or as an oil company, but not as a, a bank and, and these things. So I, I don't think that that is legitimately pre-existing non-conforming. But what we're talking about is introducing a commercial use onto the Parkway. That's what the argument was. And so what I'm saying is, why don't we look at the town town-wide? Why don't we decide-
But that's not what the moratorium was just-
What he says is in black and white. And getting him to disagree with what he says is, oh, go to a- And getting him to disagree with what he says is -- or to agree that what he's saying here is just, it's not worthwhile.
Okay. That's not my question.
I think you're overly hostile to me. And I expect that you should not be that way.
I would suggest you're out of order, sir.
Okay. This is a heck of a public meeting.
All right. Anyone else want to be heard on the zoning? All right.
I just wanted to say that --
If not, I think we'll close the hearing.
Okay. I just wanted to say that, you know, I appreciate the concept of, you know, stepping back, slowing down, looking at zoning. I mean, I think we'd all love to be less reactive and more proactive. But I feel like the zoning that's in place, what it lends itself to is a public process that if the neighborhood is active in it, then that's how it's all going to work. Is that, you know, I know I probably sound like a broken record, but when I walked through every neighborhood when I was running for office, I couldn't help but notice how different and unique every single neighborhood was. So we almost need to, when a property comes before us, we need to step back. We need to look at this property. Your neighborhood is different than my neighborhood. Every single one of our neighborhoods is different. And we're just served so much better through the public process. It was so great to have all those neighbors come in today when we were just looking at a cut into a stone wall and how much the community cared and how everybody worked together to find a solution. So I appreciate that someone has taken the time to come up with a concept and put it before us. But I actually, upon studying the concept, I think that this is a better way.
Okay, shall we?
I adamantly oppose the moratorium.
What?
I adamantly oppose the moratorium.
Oh, and I close the hearing.
Close the public hearing.
Second.
I'll take that as a motion to close the public hearing.
I move, yes, second.
Okay. Now, let's discuss the --
Oh, should we vote on that?
We're going to. What should we say to the warrant committee about this article to bring zoning to a halt in the town?
I have one question. Bill, did you look into my question at the last meeting about whether it could be constituted as a taking?
No.
With Flynn?
I didn't hear that one.
That way, we talked about maybe getting a reading from John Flynn as to whether stop not allowing special permits that are allowed by existing zoning would constitute a taking.
Sorry, I didn't hear that, but, well.
But now that I'm hearing how it's -- so you're saying it only applies to non-conforming?
No, it applies to --
That's what I thought.
No, I just read what I read.
So if you have a right under zoning to apply for a special permit, and the town says, "No, you don't have that right anymore," I think there's a pretty strong argument. And if I'm the developer, I am definitely going to make this argument that you just took the value of my property. From my perspective, that's why we don't -- that alone is why I'm going to not support this.
Now, I would like to suggest that I do think there, in his opening comments, Mr. Joe Henning made a couple of points that I would agree with. I didn't agree with all of his points. And I did take exception to the personal attack on our chairman. But I do think the idea of consistency, of thinking about how things are going to be applied, you know, from one project to another, is something we've been talking about ourselves. And I do think we all agree that we can still make improvement in that. So I'd like to suggest that we keep working on that. And I do think there are areas that we need to work on zoning, which we've talked about. And if other neighborhoods have similar requests for us, I think we should consider that. I don't think that it needs to be applied town-wide and we need to halt things. I think that some things in Milton are becoming much better by us working hard on zoning. And some of it site-specific. I'm not the one who usually rails for site-specific. But I do understand the nuances. And I do understand, after looking at these non-conforming sites that Brian and I did a couple of years ago, that they're not all the same and that they are -- there's history related to them, that, like the Ice House, you know, make for some interesting kind of how do you plan for change for those. April suggested we look at the site that's been vacant and kind of blighted by the food mart. How do you deal with that, you know? So there are things I think we can continue to work on to address some of the concerns. But I don't think the moratorium is the right way to go.
The suggestion that we're going to look at a zoning map of Milton and say, "These neighborhoods are taken care of," I think also is a little bit short-sighted. Because we've had projects in almost every neighborhood since I've been on the board, and they're hard to predict when they're going to arise. And most often, they're residential in nature. They're not anything to do with commercial. So I think I too agree that there are places, and I think the discussion earlier about the East Milton overlay is one example, where we could be a little bit more broader than, you know, just a PUD for one particular project. That would maybe make things a little bit easier, a lot more consistent. But it needs to be district-based, neighborhood-based, just like you described. I also plan to bring forward to you a suggestion on an overlay for that Knights of Columbus, very small overlay. But that's a blighted site right now. It's basically an abandoned property. And I wouldn't want to live next door. I live two blocks away, and it upsets me every single day. Can't imagine being the neighbor. I don't think saying, "Oh, now we're going to put a moratorium," so we can't do anything to address even problems, is short-sighted and unfair to a lot of people.
I don't think it's legal either, but --
I don't either.
Why don't we recommend to the warrant committee that this particular article be denied?
Yes.
Alex, will you be going to the warrant committee to express our views? So it's not just our recommendation, but rather our logic behind it, our reasoning behind it?
I've been to the warrant committee once. I don't know if they --
Been twice.
I've been to the warrant committee twice. I think that, as I looked at the warrant committee a couple of nights ago, I think they understand.
Okay. Then I'll make the motion that we recommend that the warrant committee be opposed to this citizens.
Recommend the town meeting deny this article.
All right. That language.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That is a unanimous vote. Now, the Ice House zoning amendment looks pretty good. The way I figure it is, by allowing two families, I mean, two-bedroom apartments, they could have, with a total of 16 bedrooms, that would be eight ones and four twos, which seems okay.
I'm unclear on what the AG's comment was.
The Attorney General said, "If you just have one bedroom, if you zone for just one bedroom apartments, you're in effect saying, 'We don't want any children' in this project." And there is a, in the Fair Housing Act, there is a provision that you cannot discriminate on account of familial status. And it would appear, or the Attorney General said it can be, that it's possible that this could violate the Fair Housing Act.
Okay. So the change here is not increasing the total number of units.
No.
It's increasing the number of bedrooms per unit and also the number of parking spaces per unit if it's two bedrooms.
Right.
I'm in favor.
So it would be, as I see it, your maximum would be eight ones and four twos, giving you 12 units and 16 bedrooms. Or you could have nine ones and three twos for 15 bedrooms. But it would be in that range. It seems to me that it's, that number of twos is certainly, no one is going to say that we're just trying to be cute in dealing with the Attorney General's comments. Yes?
In response to his point was, based on the Attorney General's limited standard of review, we cannot conclude that the bylaw's bedroom limitation necessarily violates the Fair Housing Act or general law, Chapter 151b. However, we strongly suggest that the town discuss this text with town council. Specifically, the town should discuss with town council whether this text needs amendments or whether it should be enforced in light of the Fair Housing Act for it.
Okay.
So it is not denied.
Yeah, but they didn't deny it, but they, in effect, said, "You're on thin ice here." So this solves the problem. So I think that we should recommend that the town meeting approve this article.
I agree. I agree.
All right. So there's a motion and a second. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, temporary signs. I've told you that we have a definition in the bylaw, which I wasn't aware of when I wrote it. And having, the building inspector brought it up, and having read it, his comment was just that this is not ready to go. So I suggest that we ask the selectmen to withdraw it. Or if they can't withdraw it, then have the warrant committee, or have our recommendation be that the article be recommitted to the planning board for further study.
Next town meeting?
You're making the motion.
I motion, White.
What, you want to do it the next meeting?
No, no.
They say so moved.
So moved.
Okay.
And I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The zoning map amendment, I think that it's going to be on the big screen. As long as, you know, look at it if you see anything of, there's still time to bring it up. But it looks pretty good to me. So, and Bill has tried hard, as has, what's his name?
Alan.
What's his name?
Alan Bishop.
The colors are not quite right, but it still is quite colorful. It's a little, it really is a little bit like Army Olive Drab, just sort of a -- In any event, shall we recommend the town meeting to approve this?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. The traffic study revolving fund, do we want to do the same thing to either have the selectmen withdraw it or have the warrant committee recommend recommitment, or that we recommend recommitment to the planning board for further study?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That does it, doesn't it, Bill? We've got Marion, though. Marion has been waiting patiently. Come on up, Marion. We really take our 10 o'clock deadline claims seriously, Cheryl.
It's been a very interesting meeting.
They all are, Marion.
I guess so.
This is where it's at.
I'm not here for anything new.
Remember that zoning minutes after Marion concludes.
Alex, may I just ask that, do you make these revisions and resend them? There's a lot of them here.
Okay. Make the revisions and resend them.
Thank you. Oh, sorry.
Oh, please, it just helps.
All right, Marion, sorry.
So I've been here a couple of times with copies of the Declaration of Trust for Wentworth. Remember that development? Well, it's getting to the time now when I feel that pretty soon I should record the Declaration of Trust. Sometimes you do it when the permit's issued. But I think it's better to have had some time to work on it. Alex was very good, sat down, went over everything in detail, particularly the wording and making it consistent, and had some specific suggestions. So I did yesterday send you a copy revised with his edits, with Brian Furze's edits. But I know I haven't heard from everybody. And I just wanted to come to you tonight and say, you don't have to say it's all set tonight, but I would like to get your comments, if you do have further comments, as soon as possible. We still, there still hasn't been a transfer of ownership to the trust that I discussed with you in September, in December. And I appreciate your vote, saying that in principle it was okay to do that, but you wanted to know who the trust, well, what the trust was going to be and who the trustees were. I would like to record this with the new owners' names, if possible. But if there's a lot of delay, I want to get it recorded. So one reason I'm not saying, you know, "Please, please approve it tonight" is I don't have the name of the trust. That gives me, I know there's going to be a little bit of time to wait and see if I can get that before I do the recording. I have three more copies of, I don't know whether you, did you get this by email?
Mm-hmm.
You get a chance?
They have a --
Can we have a hard copy, too?
Oh, you have one.
It's all --
All in color, too.
All there. It's better than the zoning.
Yeah. If you have any comments tonight, I'd love to hear them. If not, I mean, I know it's --
Looks pretty good to me, Marion.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's been worked over quite a bit. These things have, there are a few paragraphs that go on and on, and you just don't want to even read it to the end. But, you know, you look at the easements and restrictions, those are the things that are important and relate to the permit and the Conservation Commission's order of conditions. And as long as, you know, there's enough reference to your conditions and to your permit in this, the important thing is that when an owner comes in and buys a new lot in this development, that they know what the obligations of the Homeowners Association are going to be. Because that will be their obligations together. And there are always things that you maybe don't think about. So it's possible to amend these documents later on, and they do get amended. But I would like to see it as good as possible starting out. And the idea here is that we want to make sure that the homeowners understand what it is they're going to have to do going forward, what their obligations will be, and what their annual costs will be to maintain the infrastructure for this project. And that, you know, the better you write one of these each time, the next one, although each project is different, it will get better. So I've looked at every one that I could find that's been issued for a project in Milton. I looked for, I looked at them in other projects. I've worked with them in other projects after the fact. And there are a lot of things, of course, that don't get done, just like when you talked to me about a special permit. But you can at least tell people what you expect. The Homeowners Association will know what it's supposed to be doing. The best language, the better the language, the better the future will be for the project and its maintenance.
So, Alex, may I?
No.
I just want to say I am completely comfortable with the document as is. I thought everybody's comments were great, and I have no further comment. Thank you.
I second that.
No further comment.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so once you have a trustee or a declarant, a declarant, you need a declarant. And we want to know who it is. Do we, we allow assignment, I think, in our special permit, don't we? I think we do, without approval. So get us a declarant, and we'll get it back to you. So you can take it off to the registry.
Terrific. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Well done. Unusual.
If we had known how quick it would be, we would have --
Done her sooner.
-- come in a long time ago.
We wouldn't have had an audience, though.
Right, exactly. Well, we would have had a small, a smaller --
A small audience, yes. Well, Mary's just our good citizen.
All right, people.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Bill, can I give you a couple of --